I've got one. I've got one technical problem I gotta solve. It'll take just a second. Be right back. Thanks for your patience. We'll start in one minute.
I just remembered I have another meeting at 5:30. I need to tell them I can't attend. I could've gone to my other computer.
And no one realized you can link computers to Roblox programs without necessarily knowing it until the last minute. It's probably more fun anyway. All right. Mr. Hall, how are you?
Very good. I count ten commissioners.
Very good. So with that noting that the time is 5:32 PM, I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome fellow commissioners and members of the public for this special meeting of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Let me turn it out to the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Ben. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at drawyourcommunity.com. We ask that individuals who wish to speak submit an online request to speak form in advance for planning purposes. All timely requests from the public made at today's meeting on any of the items on today's agenda will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. I'd also like to note for the record that since the last meeting, the commission received 256 ecomments, 35 emails, two letters, and one map. Because these comments generally relate to mapping and not on any item on today's agenda, they will be referred to the meeting of November 13th. The log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted through the community tracker tool, builder tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners and is posted on the IRC website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials, and the commission's log of ex parte communications has been updated on the IRC website. Chair Ben?
Thank you very much, David. And before we move on, I do want to note a couple of comments for members of the public who may want to offer comment tonight. David already provided a good introduction to the reason I'm saying this. I do want to note that our agenda for this special meeting does not include an item for non-agenda public comment as is standard for special meetings. Therefore, members of the public wishing to offer comments tonight should do so on specific agenda items. As David just mentioned, our agenda tonight does not include any agenda items specifically on mapping matters, primarily because maps will be the sole focus of our meeting this Saturday, November 13th, starting at 11:00 AM. More details on that will follow at the end of tonight's meeting and, of course, are available right now on our website. For tonight, though, I'd request the public to consider providing any comments about IRC maps at that Saturday meeting, where our demographer will provide an explanation of the current maps under consideration that may facilitate public comment in the most useful and constructive ways possible for both the public and the commission. All that said, there are certainly some aspects of some items on tonight's agenda, especially item five's Voting Rights Act legal assessment, where mapping issues could be relevant for public comment and would be considered at that time. The IRC, of course, welcomes public comment at any time through various channels, including on our website, which you see displayed here alongside other ways to submit input. Thanks very much to members of the public and to commissioners as well for your patience and understanding on these matters. I will mention, as we move through the agenda, where I think it'll be most useful to offer public comment related to maps, that is, item five, Voting Rights Act legal assessment. And again, we especially look forward to receiving additional public comment about maps now and tonight in our various forums that you see on the screen, as well as our next meeting on Saturday, the 13th, starting at 11:00 AM. With all that in mind, we move on. David, the next item on the agenda is the roll call. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. I would like to note for the record that the commissioners are participating via teleconference, and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask commissioners to say here or present when called upon. Chair Ben?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Kugliak?
Here.
Commissioner Kugliak is here, thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Here.
Commissioner Serbin?
Here.
Thank you. With 12 commissioners present, we do have a quorum. Thank you, Chair Ben.
Thank you, David, and thank you, commissioners. The next item on the agenda is the discussion and possible approval of a resolution authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings. This item follows the governor's approval of AB 361 earlier this year, which allows for a simplified method for virtual participation by commissioners at IRC meetings. We are considering this item now before our current resolution expires on November 28th in order to focus our next meeting of November 13th, this Saturday, solely on mapping. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
None in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to speak on the resolution authorizing continuance of teleconference public meeting, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by telephone. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment, Chair Ben.
Thank you very much. So commissioners, do we have a motion for approval of the quote "resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953" as included with the agenda materials? Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Larson, thank you very much to approve the resolution authorizing teleconference public meetings as included with the agenda materials. Any discussion? Seeing none, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you. I'll note that the commissioners' names will continue to be called at random.
Hi. I was supposed to say... Hi.
Commissioner Inman?
Hi.
I believe Commissioner Chen is still absent. Commissioner Kugliak?
Hi.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Hi.
Commissioner Larson?
Hi.
I believe Commissioner Dostal is still absent. Commissioner Russ?
Hi.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Hi.
Chair Ben?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Serbin?
Hi.
Commissioner Pons?
Hi.
Commissioner Diaz?
Hi.
Chair Ben, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting on.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. We'll now move on to item four, a discussion and possible approval of the final racially polarized voting, or RPV, analyses as updated and included with the materials for tonight's agenda. As we've discussed previously, this report includes key data used to support the analysis required for our mapping decisions and specifically to ensure that all voters have the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice in the final supervisory districts. We begin this item with a presentation from Dr. Christian Gross, PhD. Dr. Gross, I'll leave it to you to introduce other members of your team, but let me turn to you now and give you the floor.
Hey, how is everyone doing? Sorry, there's a little bit of a glitch. I didn't hear if you were done, Chair, but thanks for having me back. Dr. Masuoka is also here with us, and we're gonna give you a couple of things. One, we completed the revision to the racially polarized voting report incorporating the feedback that you all have done, and I think it's actually even stronger than it was to begin with. So I really appreciate the inquiries and queries that led to that. And then what we're gonna talk about today is, let me share my screen and get the PowerPoint. We're gonna talk about ability to elect analyses that we will be doing on the draft map and sort of also address some of the questions that have come up about like, what do you look for? Some of the things we talked about when we were here last time, about what do you look for when it comes to drawing maps? And so what is an ability to elect district? What kind of data do we analyze and that you need to think about as map drawers to draw districts? And so the overview of this is that I want you to think about a couple of things, right? How do we know if a district that you draw for supervisors will have the ability to elect a Latino candidate of choice? That's one of the key questions that you've been asking, and you want to try to figure out in drawing the maps. And then I've also heard that you all want guidance on a specific number, right? Like, so what is the percentage Latino voting age population, VAP, or CVAP, citizen voting age population? And I just want to point out, it's really important that it needs to be sufficiently large, but like we talked about previously, it can't just be an arbitrary number. You can't just pick some arbitrary cutoff, and you've got to actually think about the data. And so, well, we're gonna talk about the historical data in just a second, but just as a reminder, when you're drawing the maps and when you're thinking across all of the districts, do not overpack Latino voters, or Latino plus other minority voters, into surrounding districts in order to, don't overpack into one district so that surrounding districts are diluted from Latino and other minority voters. Just thinking about the data, right? Like, the packing could be dilutive to districts that surround a district that you would be drawing that would have high Latino and high minority voters. So just be really cognizant to not do that. But then also, make sure you are also, because we do find evidence of racial polarization and some evidence that white voters vote as a block over minority voters in some parts of the county, you want to make sure that you do not crack Latino voters and other voters of color across districts. You don't want to be spreading out Latino voters into a bunch of districts so that their power is reduced so that white voters always vote to defeat Latino candidates of choice. All right, and so what's the exact number? Like, what's a precise number? If you want to say like, well, what Latino citizen voting age population, or what Latino voting age population should we use to draw a district that would have effective ability to give an opportunity to elect Latino candidates of choice? So what we did, and I think this is gonna be somewhat informative, it's not as informative as it could be, is we go back to 2012 to 20, there are five districts in the past. We look at the Latino CVAP in the past, the citizen voting age population from the existing supervisor districts, and if we go back, there are no districts below 52% CVAP. District one, of course, is a 52% Latino CVAP, and then the next district is 24.8. And so if you want to figure out, well, where is a point of Latino CVAP or Latino VAP that would be appropriate? There's just not data on the historical elections to tell us very much, unfortunately, right? If you were doing this in a, you know, like a legislature where there were many districts, you might be able to like pinpoint things a bit better, but here there's one district that's a 52% Latino CVAP historically, and four districts that are 24.8% or less. So we have no data to guide 24.8, between 24.8 and 52. And so I just, I want to sort of remind everyone of that, and it's just the data sparsity for making some sort of projection is just really challenging. And then as we've talked about before, and we talked about in the RPV report, context matters too. So it's really important to think about the ability to elect analyses we will do that I'll talk about shortly, because different, depending on where you draw a district, the exact number of Latino voters or other voters of color will differ, right? There's certain parts of the county where there's higher propensities of voters to, voters of color to vote together in coalition. There's parts of the county, racial polarization, we found all over the county, but it's higher in certain parts of the county than elsewhere. And so like, depending on which direction the districts that you draw go, the Latino ability to elect may differ on the district. And so this is how we'll assess that. What's the guidance that you need? We're gonna run through today a few kind of case studies of maps, that the current map and then also some of the proposed maps, and I know that you're gonna be moving to other maps and we'll be evaluating those too. But like, how do you know what's correct? You gotta do a functional analysis to see if Latino candidates of choice have the ability to elect their preferred candidates. And then the main takeaway is, don't set an arbitrary data point. Like, don't say this specific Latino CVAP is what we need. What you need is, does the district have an equal opportunity to elect Latino candidates of choice? So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna evaluate proposed districts, and we're gonna evaluate some maps that have already been done for the ability of those districts to elect Latino candidates of choice. We're gonna take some past election exogenous data and project that onto newly drawn districts, and then see if Latino candidates of choice have a chance of winning in those newly drawn districts. The analysis will basically assess if Latino candidates of choice can, yeah, Natalie?
I was gonna say, yeah. So mainly what we wanted to do for this presentation today is demonstrate how this ability to elect analysis is a tool for you to use, right? For understanding the types of districts that are ability to elect districts. And so the idea here is that, you know, we want to demonstrate and kind of present some of these past maps as a way of kind of outlining, right? How this process is gonna work for you and how our advice here in terms of an analysis on ability to elect really is providing that toolkit, right? For understanding which maps are better complying with the VRA than others.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I was getting ahead of myself a little bit, so thank you. Yeah, so the main takeaway is data sparsity on Latino CVAP and VAP in the past to make it really challenging to give you any specific projection there, but exactly what Dr. Masuoka just said, you've got to consider different districts and how they're drawn contextually and if they're likely to elect Latino candidates of choice. And we're gonna go through the current map that was in existence from 2012-20, draft map one, draft map six, and draft map seven, just as examples. Not that we're gonna like endorse one or say one is better, but just sort of to motivate how this analysis is done, as Natalie said. All right, so these are the current district maps, right? Five districts that were in existence from 2012 to 2020. This is the case study number one to see how ability to elect analyses will do, right? As I mentioned before, this on the CVAP, district one is 52% Latino CVAP, was also a 13.7% Asian CVAP, 6.8% Black CVAP, and about a quarter of white, non-Asian white CVAP. And so, and then the rest of the districts were 24.8% Latino CVAP or lower. So we focus on three districts that have the highest Latino CVAP. District two, 20%, district five, 25%, district one, 52%. And then what we do is look at Latino candidates of choice. Based on our report, we analyzed racial polarization in exogenous elections and found that a number of candidates were supported by Latino voters. And we look and see, do those candidates win? And also by how much do they win? And so this column is the total vote share. On average, that a number of Latino candidates of choice in past exogenous elections have received in district one, district two, and district five. And then this column is really important, and you're gonna be seeing this when we do the ability to elect analyses. What is the rate that Latino candidate of choice win in these districts? So district one, in the current map, Latino candidates of choice win 100% of the time. So we know that the current map is a, district one is a Latino ability to elect district. District two, Latino candidates of choice win 0% of the time. It's not, it's not an ability to elect district, right? And then district five, with a 25% Latino citizen voting age population, Latino candidates of choice win 40% of the time, but that is still not a, that is still not a Latino ability to elect district. That's, you know, less than half the time Latino candidates of choice are winning. And then this is the mean vote share that each, the Latino candidate of choice won in each district in past elections. And again, we're looking at exogenous elections. These are statewide elections for Latino candidates of choice, because those are the ones that map onto the other maps that we're gonna look at. All right, so the takeaway on this case study, district one in the old map is an ability to elect district for Latino voters, but there are no other districts that provide the opportunity for Latino candidates of choice to win. Primary elections can also be informative, and in this case, we, because it is an existing map, we can think about the primary election for supervisors for any new map. The supervisor elections don't map onto new districts, so this is a little bit more challenging. But here, the RPV report noted, and I wanted to highlight, that two candidates advanced out of the primary, Vargas and Wezo, were both the preferred candidates of Latino voters. One of them got the most support from Latino voters, and the other one got the second most support. They advanced out of the primary, and then one of those candidates, who was the preferred candidate of Latino voters in the general election, also won in the general election. And so it's important to think about the ability to win the primary and then also win in a general. All right, so here's the other, another example of what we'll be doing, and like, what ability to elect analysis looks like, and this is again, just to motivate how what really matters is the ability to elect Latino candidates of choice, not any specific CVAP number per se, especially given the data sparsity from the past map. So this was draft map one, right? And there's a number of districts here that range from different values of Latino CVAP and Latino VAP, also varying values of Black voters and Asian American voters, VAP and CVAP. And so we look at three districts that had the highest Latino voting age population and the highest Latino citizen voting age population. That's displayed in this column, right? So district one is a majority Latino district, 53.4% VAP, 47.8% CVAP. District two is a district that is not a majority Latino district, but has a substantial percentage of Latino voters, 33% VAP, 26.5% CVAP. And district five, also 30.4% VAP, 25% CVAP, high percentage of Latino voters. And then we also have Black voters and Asian voters. Black voters and Asian voters are fairly large, I mean, not particularly large, but there's, the total minority voters in some of these districts is high, right? So district one, Latino voters are 47.8% CVAP, Black CVAP, 6.1%, Asian CVAP, 13.4%. That's a fairly large percentage of minority voters. And then similarly, district two, you know, there's almost 10% Black voting age population and over 10% Asian citizen voting age population. But again, those numbers are important, but really important is, do Latino candidates of choice win in these districts? And so if we look at district one, on average, Latino candidates of choice in the exogenous elections are winning with 56% of the vote in this, in this election, or excuse me, in this district, and the rate at which Latino candidates of choice are winning, 100%. Every time a Latino candidate of choice runs in a general election in this district, they're winning in this district. So this is a Latino ability to elect district. You know, note that it's, this is important, but this is really important. The 100% or a very high propensity of winning is the key metric that you're gonna want to be looking at. And so that's the kind of thing, you're gonna draw the maps, we'll evaluate them like we have here, and then we'll see if it's a Latino ability to elect map or not. District two appears to be a district that has a pretty high probability of also electing Latino candidates of choice, right? And so I think that's in this draft map one, 80% chance. And so, or excuse me, not 80% chance, and 80% of the elections Latino candidates of choice are winning in this district. And so that's due because Latino voters are likely joining in coalition with Black and Asian voters, given what we found in the RPV report, and possibly, possibly some white crossover voters too. But this, this district has a relatively high propensity of electing Latino candidates of choice. Now, district five, where there was quite a bit of racial polarization in our report, also has a large Latino VAP and CVAP, but not substantially large, but this district does not have a ability to elect Latino candidates of choice. Latino candidates of choice are only winning 40% of the elections in which they run. This would not be a district that would provide an equal opportunity to elect Latino candidates of choice. So again, this is just another case study. It's not that you're looking at district one per se, but it was a, it was a map that had just different values of the VAP and CVAP, and so we wanted to see this. And one of the takeaways here is, district one is a Latino ability to elect district, but then neighboring district two also shows some propensity to elect Latino candidates of choice. And I think this map can be helpful, because those districts neighbor each other, and in some of your other draft maps, those districts neighbor each other too. So district one needs to be large enough of Latino voters and voters of color in order to elect a Latino candidate of choice. But if you overpack district one, district two may be weakened to have less influence to elect Latino candidates of choice. So you want to think about both district one and district two, or in some maps, it might be district three or whatever, the districts when they neighbor each other, too much of one could be bad for the other, but then too much diluting across both could also be bad for the ability of Latino voters to elect Latino candidates of choice. All right, so real fast, the draft map six, just to motivate again, some of these differences. And this is just like various case studies, the Latino VAP and CVAP differs in these maps. In this one, the CVAP is 50.4% in district one, 27.7 in district five. The Asian and the Black VAP and CVAP differ across the districts too. So again, we're gonna look at the districts that have relatively higher Latino VAP and CVAP. In this, in this draft map six, it's district one, it's district three, and it's district five. But district one is the one that is the Latino majority district, both in terms of VAP but also in terms of CVAP. So 56.7% Latino VAP, 50.4% Latino CVAP. And then what's the rate at which Latino candidates of choice are winning in district one in draft map six? It's 100% of the time again, like we've seen in all the other maps. And what's interesting is, right, the Latino VAP and CVAP is differing slightly, the Black VAP and Asian VAP is differing slightly too, but what matters is, are Latino candidates of choice winning and have a very good chance of winning in terms of an equal opportunity of electing candidates of choice? And it seems to be that district one across all of these different maps, that's happening regard. And then district three, and then this draft map six, district three is just above, if I recall, is just above district one, you know, similar, 31.2% Latino VAP, 26% CVAP, but almost 12% Asian voting age population, little over 9% Black voting age population. And again, in our RPV report, we show a lot of evidence that Latino and Black voters vote in coalition together, and some evidence that Asian voters will also sometimes vote in coalition with other voters of color. And so this district is having Latino candidates of choice win 80% of the time, just like we saw in the draft map one. But this suggests this could be a possible coalition district where a Latino candidate of choice is winning relatively frequently, providing an opportunity for Latino candidate of choice to win at a rate of approximately 80%. And then district five, even though, this is why I want you to not focus just on some particular arbitrary cutoff Latino VAP or CVAP number, district five has a larger Latino VAP, 34.2, has a larger Latino CVAP of 27.7 than does district three, right? And so this district, even with a larger Latino CVAP and VAP, but a smaller percentage of Black voters and Asian voters, is not an ability to elect district. Latino candidates of choice are only winning 40% of the time here. And so this, this is really one of the takeaways where you want to really focus on like, how frequently can Latino candidates of choice win, not some number, right? Not just some number, because like, this district has higher Latino VAP and CVAP than does this district, but this district has a higher minority voter coalition population and has a higher propensity of electing Latino candidates of choice. So the takeaway of this map, district one again is a Latino ability to elect district. We're very confident of that in draft map six. It's also a majority Latino CVAP and VAP district, and then neighboring district three also shows a high propensity to elect Latino candidates of choice with a coalition of Latino voters and other voters of color. District five is not, though, even though it's Latino VAP and CVAP are very similar to district three. And then finally, just to motivate this again, we've got draft map seven, right? It's a little bit different than draft map six, but there are some similarities. This one, the VAP and the CVAP numbers differ in the districts. In district one, this is a majority Latino voting age population district, 53.1. It's 46.6% Latino CVAP district. And then the Black population, VAP is 4.3, CVAP 5.0, Asian, VAP 11.9, CVAP 11.9. So here, what is the rate that the candidate of choice is winning in this district one with a somewhat different configuration than we saw in draft map six? Latino candidates of choice are winning at a rate of 80%. And so 80%, I think, is pretty high, and I would say this is a Latino ability to elect district still. The other map, draft map six, is a little bit higher propensity of the likelihood of Latino candidate of choice winning, because there was 100% of the time Latino candidates of choice won, but here it's 80% of the time. But it's still a very high, you know, opportunity for Latino candidates of choice to win. And then similarly, again, district three, just to the north of district one in draft map seven, we have a district that's 31.2% Latino VAP. we have a, a district that's thirty-one point two percent Latino VAP, twenty-six point zero percent Latino C VAP, nine percent black V A P, eleven point nine percent Asian American V A P. And the eighty percent of the time, the preferred candidate of Latino voters wins in this district. When we look at statewide exogenous elections from the past. So what we're finding here is these two districts are performing similarly. Um, and then District Five again, with a fairly large but minority Latino, uh, VAP of thirty point one, and then a somewhat lower twenty-four point nine percent Latino C VAP. This is not, this is not performing for Latino candidates of choice. This is not an ability to elect district. And again, District Five, Latino VAP and C VAP are pretty similar to District Three. But the, the coalition with other voters of color is really what's making the difference in District Three. So if you're thinking about what do you do for your guidance, right? Don't just focus on one number, focus on how are the districts together? Um, and how, you know, how are the districts performing for Latino candidates of choice? For candidates of choice of other, um, voters of color, if you're interested in that too. Um, and that's really the key metric. And then this, this just summarizes Map Seven. District One is again, a Latino ability to elect district. It does, in, in Draft Map Seven, it does differ from Draft Map Six a little bit. Draft Map Six had a hundred percent win rate for Latino candidates of choice. Draft Map Seven has an eighty percent win rate for Latino candidates of choice. But they're both, they're both like, they're both, um, high opportunity districts for Latino candidates of choice. Neighboring District Three, again, high propensity to elect Latino candidates of choice when Latino voters vote in coalition with other voters of color. And then, um, District Five is not, is not, that's not the case. So what do you need to take away from all this? We ran through four of these really quickly. Again, we're not endorsing a map, we're not saying that one is better than the other. We're just trying to motivate, it's the, beyond thinking about a specific percentage point VAP or C VAP, you want to think about do Latino candidates of choice win based on these statewide exogenous elections that we can look at? And we're going to analyze maps that you produce and then, and tell you if they do or not. And so we can continue to do these similar ability to elect analyses, and that's what you need to focus on. And so obviously some data emerged from this. You do, you do need to have a district with a, a significant proportion of Latino voters. Also, if you're thinking about District Three or District Two, depending on the draft map, just north of District One, you do need to think about Latino voters voting in coalition with other voters of color, and that that district together possibly being such that a Latino candidate of choice could win. We can also analyze the ability to elect Asian American candidates of choice, if that's something that you're interested in in your draft maps. Um, and then the final, the final takeaway is don't do, don't dilute. Our guidance to you is to think holistically about Latino voters and other voters of color in the county, especially given that the, the demographics have changed in the county. Do not put too few voters in District One that are Latino. It's really important to, um, to not do that. But also don't spread Latino voters out all over the county as well to crack. And then the other guidance is just like, don't forget about the other districts. The reason we spent a lot of time on District Three or District Five is that, you know, it is possible, it looks like from these draft maps, to have a, a, a potential coalition district between Latino voters and other voters of color. So you could have a District One that's likely to elect Latino candidates of choice, and then a District Three and a District Two that maybe is, um, uh, that appears to have some propensity to have voters of color voting in coalition together to elect a Latino candidate of choice. And so I think that's going to be important for you to consider when you go through the rest of your draft maps. Natalie, you want to add some?
I think just maybe one more point is that, you know, how do we then bring together the R P V report that we wrote along with the ability elect? Is especially thinking about, um, this last point about don't forget other districts. You know, what the R P V report is showing is that there is, um, there is variation in the degree of racial polarization across the county, right? It is actually not a similar rate across the districts. What we did show in the report, right, is that in the north side of the county, uh, where this, these, usually these, in these draft maps, we, around where the District Five is, uh, these new proposed District Fives are, we found actually very, very high rates of, of racial polarization, right? And so we're seeing here that even though if you have a similar size of Latino C VAP in Five compared to Three, right, because of the degree of racial polarization, that is suggesting right that, uh, in, uh, the, the north side of the county, you actually need a larger number of C, of Latino C VAP in order to give, uh, um, a higher rate, and a higher likelihood of Latinos, uh, having the opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. So I think just to bring home, um, the last point that Christian made, which is really, uh, uh, you know, bringing in the R P V report, acknowledging here that, uh, there are different rates of racial polarization. And this ability to elect analysis is helping us take that into account, right? That by drawing these variations and these different iterations of the districts, we can really then start thinking about, right? If you draw a district in a different way, right, to what extent then would that, um, help increase the rate of a Latino ability to elect, um, in that district?
Yeah, thanks Natalie. And, um, I mean, just to reiterate, so I really do think it's important. District One has been a lot of your focus and it should be, right? But also, the other districts should be a focus too, right? And, and that's hopefully coming out of the, of our analysis here in our R P V report. Okay, and that's all we have on the presentation. We're happy to do questions or I'm not sure how you want to proceed.
Well, first, I want to say thank you on behalf of the commission to both of you, uh, for that presentation. I think it was very, very useful to hear an illustration of the process so that we have an idea of how that's going to be applied to new draft maps as they go. And I'll continue to emphasize that all these are draft maps, whether they appear to be dividing a locality or coping in different ways with C VAPs in different districts as formulated on different maps, or any number of other factors. So, uh, commissioners, let me preview how I think we'll proceed on this. We'll take comments from the public, then, um, have some questions and answers with Christian and Natalie. And then we'll turn to the next agenda item. Uh, I do want to be very conscious that there may be some time issues involved here, and I do want to be fair to members of the public as well. So I'll ask commissioners especially to be concise with your questions, knowing that this process will be continuing and we'll have a whole series of other, uh, ability to elect analysis coming up. For now though, uh, I'm about to ask David if there are any requests from the public to speak on this item. I would like to remind the public that any comments related, uh, to mapping under this agenda item need to be specifically related to racially polarized voting analyses or ability to elect analysis as Christian and Natalie just showed us. Other comments regarding mapping might be better offered under the next agenda item concerning a legal assessment analysis under the Voting Rights Act. With that, David, do we have any, uh, requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you Chair Bean. We do have one request in advance of today's meeting. I would ask that any members of the public who wish to address the commission on the racially polarized voting study, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by dialing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Speakers will have three minutes to address the commission, and I'll begin with the advanced request. John Costigan, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, I just have a general question. What is the chance of higher, of electing a Caucasian person in Area One? Since we're now breaking down my racial guidances. And I tend to live in the East County where, uh, Section One covers.
Thank you very much. If any other member of the public would like to address the commission, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any other virtual hands, that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bean.
Very good. Um, Commissioners, I should have previewed as well. We can certainly take some clarifying questions. If it's acceptable to commission, for the sake of expediency, I'd like to move to the motion because this is an action item and just group the questions and discussion together as we've done at times. So not seeing objection to that and recalling that this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve the final racially polarized voting analysis of San Diego County report by Dr. Gross and his team, as revised and dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one, and included with these agenda materials? So moved. Okay, Commissioner Pons and Second Commissioner Inman, thank you. And again, Commissioners, I'll ask you to keep the discussion and questions and answers to R P V and ability to elect matters and save Voting Rights Act matters for the next agenda item. So I have Commissioner Russ, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Pons, Commissioner Inman. And that's a good starting list. Commissioner Russ, please go ahead.
I know how my students feel sometimes after one of my lectures, uh, long ago. I, I feel like I gotta, I've gotta be Goldilocks here. You, you're telling me don't pack, but don't crack, you know? I mean, it's, it's, uh, and but you're not giving me numbers. So I, I'm feeling like I've got two, um, mutually exclusive, uh, constraints here. And, um, and that, and that's troubling to me. Uh, the other, I, I, I read, I read your report as well as I could. And I did notice that you'd said that Asian American and Latin American, uh, La- Latino, um, generally vote in a block, they vote together. So it seems to me that, that that should be, um, considered when, when you're, when you're coming up with your, with your, um, what was it, um? Well, your, uh, was, what did you call it, your exogenous, um, total vote share as a percent of the district? Yeah, uh, it seems to me that, that really that, you shouldn't just do the Latino, uh, as, um, by itself, but it should be, um, uh, there is kind of a coalition here. There's a block Latino, black and Asian. So that to me, it seems like you're really, now, now you, now you bifurcate it's problem. You know, essentially you've got Latino, black, Asian, and then I guess white, you know, is what you have. Uh, you mentioned, um, in your report too, that there are high levels of, uh, white crossover voting, uh, was exhibited. And my question is there, what about Latino crossover voting? Was there, was there a high level of that at all?
Yeah, so tho- those are good questions. Let me start with the first stuff, because I want, I do think that's really important. And I, I hear what you're saying about like, don't do it this way and don't do it this way. And you've got to find the kind of the sweet spot, right? But, but they all, that is the reason that we're, we will evaluate the maps, right? So like, we'll evaluate a map, a draft map, and if it shows forty percent of Latino candidates of choice winning in a district, that won't be a good map, right? If the district is drawn to elect, let's see, to give an opportunity to elect Latino candidates of choice. So, but a little bit more guidance. So you're, you're honing in on a couple of things in the R P V report, right? So there is a lot of evidence and, you know, we added some of this, so I appreciate your guidance previously. There's a lot of evidence of coalition voting between Latino voters and black voters in San Diego County. And so, um, that's important. There's also evidence of coalition voting with Asian American voters and other voters of color in, um, some, many of the exogenous elections in, um, in San Diego County. And you need to look at the report to look at it very specifically in terms of how it may differ in different parts of the county and so on. But there is, so this isn't just about Latino voters, but Latino voters are the largest minority group in San Diego County. And so it's really important to think about Latino voters as the largest minority group because from a data standpoint, um, if you can draw a district, that is a Latino ability to elect district, that's important. And you can, and how many can you draw? And, you know, I think Bruce can get into some of that for his legal analysis. But, um, you, we, we start with Latino voters because Latino voters are the largest group in the county, um, of the, the largest minority group. And, um, and have also grown a lot. But you really do want to think like, what's the difference between District Three and District Five in those, those maps? Those draft maps that we evaluated, right? District Five is a white, non-Hispanic white majority district, which there's extensive racial polarization, where white voters vote for one candidate and Latino voters vote for another candidate, and Latino voters lose all the time, or, or almost all the time. I need to, I need to be precise, right? Um, the, um, and so the, that's the kind of place where there's evidence of racial polarization. And so District Three in Draft Map Six and Seven, the black voters and Asian voters and Latino voters, there's evidence of them voting in coalition to elect a candidate potentially, who is a Latino candidate of choice, but who would also be a black candidate of choice, right? So that's, that we, we only put so much in the, um, in the report. But so that's when you're drawing the maps, if you're thinking about District One, you want to think about Latino ability to elect. But you may also want to think about the second district that is going to also provide an opportunity if there's a coalition, right? And so that's where your guidance would be, a district that is maybe a third or so, or even more Latino, may need, if it, if it's a sixty plus percent white district, a lot of the evidence might suggest that white voters would vote contrary to Latino voters. But if it's a, a, a district that's a little bit more of voters of color, Latino voters, black voters and/or Asian voters in relatively large percentages, that district could provide an opportunity, um, to give a higher propensity for minority voters to choose candidates. And so, and you know, when we were here a couple of weeks, I don't remember, a few weeks ago now, you know, the, the, the demographics of the county have changed so much in ten years that those are the kind of things you want to, you want to be thinking about. Um, and then did we look at, um, there's a question about white crossover voting. So just to define these terms, um, coalition voting is typically defined in, uh, as when minority groups vote together for the same candidates. And then crossover voting is typically defined as when white voters vote with, um, voters of color for the same candidates. And, um, the, uh, there is some evidence of crossover voting. That doesn't mean that white voters are voting for the same candidates, by the way. But there, there's, you know, twenty percent, twenty-five percent in some of the districts of white voters who are supporting, um, Latino candidates of choice. But again, if you have a district that's mostly white, that's still got, not going to be enough. There's good, white voters are going to be blocking Latino voters' ability to elect candidates of choice. And Natalie, you want to add anything else on that?
I think to, to also, my, my one point that I would add to Christian's was, would be that the ability to elect analysis really is offering some guidance on cracking and packing. Um, I think the most, um, common example of the ability to elect analysis, uh, talking about packing is when you're creating districts that are, say, like eighty percent Latino, right? Um, and then we can calculate the ability to elect and compare that to, say, a district that is fifty-five percent Latino, right? And so the idea here is that does the ability to elect rate change um, in any significant rate as you get larger and larger in number? Um, and I think especially as we're thinking about the District One, right? Thinking about to what extent, um, the number is getting higher and to what extent you really are improving the like, the, 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 that, that rate of, um, electing a, a Latino candidate of choice. Um, and so I think that's the, the, I think that that's the most straightforward answer here in terms of how the different ways that when we come back analyzing your maps, um, this ability to elect analysis will help guide, um, some of these ideas of cracking and packing. But I think that the, the packing there is, is this probably the most straightforward example.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Inman, Commissioner Brown.
Hey, um, hello and thank you for your report. What I was wondering is, does the race of the candidates have, uh, like, let's say there are no Latino or black candidates or Asian candidates on the ballot? It's all white can, candidates in an area. How does that affect something and are you can, you know, how does the weight of the proportion of the different races in that area get affected because they're only have choices that are white or they only have choices that are Latino? Or, or maybe a mix of those? Let's say they have a, a Latino, uh, person running for candidate, as a candidate, and then maybe they have a black person running as a candidate. Does that dilute the, um, the amount of, uh, that would, I, I guess, can you understand what I'm saying or?
Yeah, there's, I mean, so there's a couple of things I want to mention. And so political, there's some political science research, not specific to San Diego, but, um, that's more national that shows when a Latino candidate runs, who's relatively similar to a, a, other, uh, white candidate, there's often a couple of percentage points lower that the Latino, Latino candidate will get. There's, it's, it's just sort of a relative, um, relatively strong finding in the political science literature. Um, and so, so when you do have a Latino candidate who is the Latino candidate of choice running versus a candidate who is non-Hispanic white preferred by Latino voters, Latino candidates often just do a little bit worse, right? Um, and, you know, the exact reason doesn't matter as much in this particular, what you need to do, right? It's, the why of it is not as important as that that happens. And so, um, and, um, the, the other thing is like, specific to, um, San Diego County, one of the reasons we look at these exogenous elections is California has a lot of candidates of, um, choice who are Latino, right? And so we specifically in exogenous elections, look at those cases as the, as the most highly probative exogenous elections where Latino candidates are running and, um, they'll, um, and they're running against, uh, typically white candidates. Um, and then similarly in our analysis, we looked at Asian American candidates who are preferred by Asian American voters. who are running against, um, non-Asian candidates, typically white candidates. And so the, we try to, we try to address that in the RPV report. Um, but those, those cases, you know, in a, in a place like California with its diversity of candidates, we have a number of cases that there are people who are of different racial and ethnic backgrounds. Um, and then the last thing I'll just mention is the, you know, so we're, we're talking a lot about District One historically, but if we think about the other four districts in the last decade, those candidates, the candidates who've won there have typically been white candidates of choice, right? So we're, we're focusing on Latino candidates of choice and, but historically in eighty percent of the districts, white candidates of choice of one. And then in twenty percent of the districts, Latino candidates of one. So we all, just remember holistically about the whole county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. Um, let me take just a pause here to explain, uh, some process issues. Um, part of the challenge here is that we may lose our next speaker at seven o'clock. So I have to try to structure things to be fair to everyone concerned. The current list I have for Dr. Gross and, and Ellie is Commissioners Pons, Inman, Diaz, Serbin, Garcia. What I would propose is to take one or two more questions, then move on to a vote uh, on the RPV study because that's the action item before us. Dr. Gross, can you stay on and Natalie for a while in case we need to come back?
No problem.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioners, then my proposal would be we hear from Mr. Adelson. We have some questions from him, then hear from the public. And then if needed, we can suspend the rules and come back to Dr. Gross. That's how I'm envisioning things right now. Let me not take up more time. Uh, that's so precious. But instead turn to Commissioner Pons and we'll, uh, go over process again as needed. Commissioner Pons, please.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Gross and your team, thank you for that nice seventy-seven page report. It was a difficult read, but a very good read. So thank you very much. Uh, so I have a couple of requests, uh, that you analyze other minorities' ability to field and elect their candidates of choice, not just focus on the Latin community. The second question is, can we consider, um, whether we're talking about C VAP or VAT, um, inflection points, uh, inflection ranges, not just single points. That would be another request. And the last thing goes to Commissioner Russ's point about packing and cracking versus dilution. And I think there will be dilution no matter what we do, but certain degrees of dilution. And maybe there's an acceptable range of dilution and that goes back to the issue of inflection ranges and your comments, please.
Okay. Yeah. So on the first point, we, we added, we've added some of that already into the, the revised report based on your comments at the previous meeting. So we, uh, e- even though we're emphasize, again, we're emphasizing Latino candidates of choice in this presentation to motivate how things are. But if, if you want to do an ability to elect analysis on black candidates of choice, we have that data that's already in the racially polarized report. So that could be done.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let me just correct that. Not just like other, other candidates of choice.
What, you mean like Asian American? Yeah, which we've done, we can do that also for sure. And we have that in the RPV report.
Great. Thank you. Continue.
Yeah. And so, I mean, the main point is that we, we are focusing on Latino candidates of choice here as the largest group in the county. And the report, however, includes Latino candidates of choice, Asian American candidates of choice and black candidates of choice. And they're analyzed. Both primary and general elections have been added. And I actually really appreciate the feedback we got a few weeks ago because we, we added several primary elections that were not previously in the report. We added several, um, data points about, um, black voters and Asian American voters that weren't in the report. And so it's just that, um, that we had analyzed, but we're, we're not as extensively included. And so I think you have all of that information and we definitely can analyze, um, in the ability to elect analyses, other, um, candidates of choice beyond Latino candidates of choice. Um, with the, with the caveat of, you do have to also remember that the, the demographics of the county are such that the largest group, a minority group is Latino voters. The next largest group is Asian American voters. Both of those groups have grown dramatically and so need to be examined. And then also black, um, black voters too have not, uh, are, are the next small, uh, the next largest group. And so you, there's, because there's only five districts, there are some constraints that, um, are, make things a little bit harder.
Absolutely. Constraints notwithstanding, I'm focused on coalitions and you focused on that during your discussion. Continue.
Yeah. I mean, on coalition districts, what we find in the, um, RPV report and in the ability to analysis examples is that there is evidence of coalitions across, um, voters of color in San Diego County, right? And so when you're drawing maps, you want to think about coalitions, you, I, I would, I, I would suggest that the data are there that you could have coalition districts, um, in a, in addition to the District One.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Inman, your hand went down.
I mean, I could still ask later, so that's fine.
Okay, great. So, um, because of the time, I'm going to beg, uh, the three remaining commissioners who requested the floor, um, to hold off. Are there any questions specific to the RPV report? Because we're about to vote on that. Commissioner Diaz.
Um, yeah. So as the presentation, I noticed that in Draft Map Six and Seven, um, is there a way that just, and this is probably in the report, but District Two comparison with District Three, um, just to kind of have those numbers there. That's all. It's just a clarification.
Do you, do you mean just, sorry, District Two from which map? Just to clarify.
Well, it's, uh, yeah. So we have three, one, three and five in drafts, in Draft Map Six. And then Draft Map Seven is one, three and five again, but I would have liked to see also, um, a comparison of District Two. Or maybe it's because the numbers are switched around. I'm not.
Yeah, I see. It's the numbers. So two and three in Draft Map One, Draft Map Six, Draft Map Seven are, are the analog districts. They're relatively similar.
That, that clears up. I, I should, yeah.
I'll also clarify, we were trying to generally demonstrate how you would use the ability to elect. And so when we do come back, we, we will be presenting all the districts. Um, this is just more of a guide to, for you to understand what it's going to look like.
Commissioner Serbin on the RPV report.
Thank you, Chair Baim, and thank you to, um, to the authors of the, the report. Very, very well done. Um, I, it said that you analyzed exogenous elections featuring Latino candidates running against non-Latino candidates and then Asian candidates running against non-Asian candidates. How were you, um, how did you determine the, uh, I, the, the ethnic identities of those candidates? Were those like self-declared or, um, just from like, I guess campaigns or how was that determined?
Yeah. I mean, so that's, that, that's self-identity, right? So the, these are, these are candidates who ran for statewide office and had relatively high profiles and in terms of their identification with their racial and ethnic group.
Thank you for that. Not seeing any other questions from Commissioners. Uh, Christian or Natalie, are there any final comments you want to offer on the report itself? Okay. Very good. So David, would you please call the role for the vote on the motion on the floor uh, to summarize to approve the final racially polarized voting analysis of San Diego County report by Dr. Gross and team as revised and dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one and included with the agenda materials?
Thank you, Chair Baim. Commissioner Larson?
Hi.
Commissioner Inman?
Hi.
Commissioner Serbin?
Hi.
Commissioner Pons?
Hi.
I believe Commissioner Dostal is still absent. Commissioner Chen is still absent. Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Chair Baim?
Hi.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much, David. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, thank you, Christian and Natalie for that portion. And again, appreciate your patience staying around in case there are additional questions to be asked. We'll move on now though to item five. A legal assessment of VRA implications by Special Voting Rights Act Council Bruce Adelson Esquire. This assessment provides important analysis of the data presented in the previous item and assessment for Commissioners to draw on in drawing maps, especially to ensure that all voters have the opportunity to elect candidates of choice in the final supervisory districts. We'll begin with some brief introductory remarks by RC Council Marguerite Leoni and then move directly to Mr. Adelson's presentation. Marguerite, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Uh, briefly, the data concerning racially polarized voting and its impact is one factor in determining Voting Rights Act compliance. With us again this evening to discuss the legal significance of that data, specifically in San Diego County, is, uh, Mr. Bruce Adelson, who has spoken to you a couple of times and is the Commission's Voting Rights Act Special Counsel. And with that, Mr. Adelson, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much and good evening. It's good to see everybody again. Uh, what I had thought I would do tonight, I mean, you received my, uh, my letter opinion. This is a, you heard a very data intensive presentation from Christian and Natalie. And these data points are involved very complex, sometimes, um, searingly complex issues. I wanted to focus on a couple of key points from a legal perspective. Take some time for questions. I do appreciate your graciousness tonight. You are the first of three Western state presentations for me tonight. So I very much appreciate your indulgence, uh, this evening. And of course I look forward to having additional conversations with you because I have to stress that I think as I had said one other time, this isn't an exam where, you know, you're like, you, everything just clicks immediately. These, these are very complex issues, both legally, geographically and demographically. But I want to stress a couple of key points. The point that you heard earlier from Christian about not selecting arbitrary racial statistical points, goals is incredibly important. Doing so is unconstitutional. The Supreme Court was very clear in the last redistricting cycle that arbitrary mechanical racial targets are unconstitutional. I view the court's opinions from the last cycle as being particularly instructive, particularly the cases that were decided towards the end of the cycle. So the, to the extent that of course you're using race, which is important, if not required in redistricting, don't set targets at all. The racial percentages are linked to data and analysis. And then there's another point I want to make about that in a few moments. The Voting Rights Act does not require one hundred percent success in an ability to elect district. An eighty percent district is looking pretty good under the Voting Rights Act. The, the Voting Rights Act and the U.S. Supreme Court essentially require that minority candidates of choice usually win or usually are not blocked by a white majority racially polarized vote. The Voting Rights Act also does not require, nor can it require that candidates of a certain race must be elected. Candidates of choice can be candidates of any race. That often the, uh, candidates of, uh, preferred by minority communities may tend to also be minority candidates. But there's no requirement that that be true. And there have been many elections, of course, where white candidates or candidates of a different race than the majority race of a particular district are candidates of choice. So please remember that, uh, requiring or districting to elect a candidate of a certain race is going to be problematic. The Voting Rights Act does not guarantee success. The marker is usually. Do candidates of choice usually win? Are candidates of choice of minority voters usually blocked by, uh, a white, the majority block voting together to prevent electoral success? So the eighty percent district, uh, rate of success that Christian talked about earlier, to, in my opinion, that's, that's going to be an ability to elect district. Clearly the candidates there are winning usually. So I think that the, that you're on pretty safe ground. One other point that I real, I wanted to make and really stress that after, and, and I know Christian and Natalie talked about analyzing your maps to do, to give you a, a feel for that threshold at which, below which you should not drop that threshold of voting age population at which minorities can elect candidates of choice is very important. But what's also important, and the Supreme Court has long endorsed this, I'm, I know that in San Diego County, just like in many counties throughout the country, there are distinct, compact, discreet, historic minority communities that share culture, language, socioeconomic, uh, considerations. You can keep those districts whole. In fact, I would recommend keeping those districts whole. So that were those areas whole, so that when you are including those communities in a redistricting plan, it's okay if the percentage exceeds that threshold, that voting age population threshold. Why? You're not packing the district. What you're doing is you're keeping communities together. You've already determined the level at which minorities need, uh, voting age population to elect candidates of choice. Uh, you are now adhering to traditional redistricting criteria about keeping communities whole, about respecting cultures, language, various commonalities. That's a different consideration. So if you get to that, that threshold, but you find, wow, there are these two cities, two towns, two school districts, we'd really like to keep them whole because we've gotten public comment about that. They share culture, language, um, social mores. So we're going to keep them together. That's not packing. Packing is just putting people in a district arbitrarily to dilute voting strength, to discriminate against them, to weaken their ability across that district and others. So that's a very important consideration to keep in mind. So those are some of the key points I wanted to make and, and reaffirm a little bit from what we've talked about before. Piggybacking off what you heard Christian and Natalie talk about. So now I'm very happy to, um, take any questions that you may have, so anything that I can help you with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce, and it's really good to have those concise points. I will again ask the patience of members of the public because of this, uh, unexpected development on scheduling. What we'll do now is move to clarifying questions and comments on this informational item. This is not an action item on our agenda. There's no action required of the Commission tonight. But I do want to give Commissioners a chance to offer clarifying questions and comments to Mr. Adelson. So I have Commissioner Serbin to start us off. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Dr. Adelson. Appreciate the, uh, the report. I wanted to ask, um, we heard in, um, a public comment earlier today about what the, um, chances are of a, um, white candidate of choice winning a district. And so, um, I wanted to give you an opportunity to address why that analysis wasn't performed if, if you could.
Well, that's a good question. I can't speak to what, what, what was, was that included or why was it included in the RPV discussion. But as I said earlier, candidates of any race can be the candidate of choice as determined by analysis of a coalition of minority voters or a majority of one particular, um, group of voters, Latino voters, for example. So that's been true for a long time. The, whether or not the, any particular candidate is the candidate of choice under the Voting Rights Act of a particular majority minority group, excuse me, or a coalition of minority groups, as you, as you've seen, comes through election analysis, comes through the analysis that's in the RPV report. But also that's why I really wanted to stress candidates of choice can be anybody. Candidates of choice are determined by analysis. And that's certainly true in California as it is in my state of Maryland. Candidates of choice can be of any race. So, uh, I, I hope that that's responsive to your question, but I really have to stress too, I think we talked about this the first time. We, we, uh, had an opportunity to interact. Remember, race cannot be the predominant consideration in redistricting. The number one thing, the thing that overrides everything, that is unconstitutional, cannot do that. And I don't remember if I had, if I had told you this. And I don't remember if I, if I had told you this kind of, it's not a story, but it's something that I explain to all my clients. If you look at race, it's similar to like when you're driving a car. When we drive cars, we do all kinds of things. Step on the brake, hit the gas, turn the car on, use the blinkers. If we just do one thing, and let's say that's adjusting the air conditioning, and we don't pay any attention to anything else, we're going to get into an accident. Same thing is true in redistricting. If the only thing you're doing is thinking about race and looking at race, you're going to have an accident, meaning you'll be in a problematic situation legally. So race is a very important, required part of redistricting, but it can't override everything else, like communities of interest, keeping people of a similar background together, whether it's religiously, from, from a cultural standpoint. So there are a lot of other criteria that you have to follow. So keep that car analogy in mind. Can't be the main thing, can't be the only thing. It is an important thing on your list of considerations. So, thank you.
And I'm sorry, could I have just a follow-up question, Dr. Adelson, if I might? So there, there, in addition to wondering why, I guess maybe, is there a threshold for which, or other groups need to be identified? So I know why we're, we're looking at, or analyzed why. So for example, I know why we're analyzing the Latino group, because it's the largest group. Is there, at what threshold should we start looking at other groups as well? I guess, if that's a fair question to ask. And then there, and then another sort of maybe related question is, I would appreciate if you could remind us why, like, race seems to be, you know, we're so focused, we're, we're talking a lot about race right now. A lot of the public comments that we receive are wondering why it is that we're talking about race. Why aren't we talking about other, maybe socio-economic factors or demographic markers? I would appreciate if you could maybe remind us why it is that we are, why this conversation is only about race.
Well, let me take the second part of your question first, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Because as we know, the Voting Rights Act was passed in 1965, and it was passed in response to the March on Montgomery, Alabama, the march over the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, was passed to address significant racial discrimination in voting. So the Voting Rights Act is a federal law, obviously, is a requirement in redistricting. The Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution prohibits discrimination also based on race and color. So the, when you have a discussion about racially polarized voting in the Voting Rights Act, that will include race. They're, they're inseparable. I think that the, but I certainly agree. That's why I wanted to mention the communities, COIs, and keeping traditional communities together. That's another part of redistricting. And while federal law, including the Constitution, that's always your number one criterion, because federal law controls over state law. But you have a lot of other aspects of redistricting to be looking at. But since federal law controls over state law, and we're talking tonight about the Voting Rights Act and racially polarized voting, that's where this discussion is coming from. Frankly, I'd love to come back and we could talk about population deviation. We could talk about contiguity and compactness. We could talk about communities of interest. But I find that often in working with redistricting commissions, and as you know, I do that a lot, the, one of the big areas of interest and concern is, well, how do we stay on the right side of the law generally? And my specialty is federal law, which is the Voting Rights Act and the Constitution. So that would be my response. But as I said, I would, I love population deviation, and I would welcome the opportunity to talk about that, because that is also a very important part of redistricting. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Thank you. Commissioner Inman.
And I'm sorry, but Dr. Adelson, so what is the, is there a threshold for us to require analysis of other groups?
I'm sorry. What I look for is if you have a population that's like 1%, 2%, 3%, they're just not going to have any, any play in influencing the outcome of an election. Though also, that population is so small, it is impossible to do a racially polarized voting analysis, because they're so small. You can make inferences. I know that in, with one of my clients, we did some analysis of a Chaldean community. Chaldeans being Arab-American, but Christian and not Muslim. So, but we were able, through anecdotal information, they're a pretty small population, to come up with some good analysis of, and, and supposition about voting patterns and how to protect their interests. So I think if you wanted to analyze smaller populations, there are ways to do it. I've done that in other places with other experts, but it depends on being able to localize where they live, the individual circumstances of your jurisdiction. But typically, in, in my experience, if the population is under 5% broadly, then that likely will, they likely will not be any significant influence in the outcome of an election. That can vary by jurisdiction. But it's rare, in my experience, to see a very small population influencing the outcome of an election.
Thank you, and it's, it's interesting that you used the Chaldean example, because that's something we have had some public comment about and may very well come up, I think, in some of the map discussions that we're going to have on Saturday. For right now, Commissioner Inman, thank you for your patience. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Going back to the existing supervisory boundaries, when they did the ability to elect, there was a district that had 100%.
Right.
Does that set a precedent that anything that we do going forward must at least have one district that makes that threshold?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. It's similar to a question I get a lot. There's, there's a lot of, not surprisingly, a lot of misapprehension, misinformation out there generally, let's say, about the Voting Rights Act. I get a lot of questions about how many majority-minority districts are required by the Voting Rights Act. Very simple, zero. The Voting Rights Act doesn't say anything about requiring majority-minority districts. What it says is to provide an opportunity to elect, basically an equal opportunity regardless of race or color. So I think that's a great point, but the, the specific answer is no, because there is a 100% opportunity to elect, doesn't mean you're locked in and you have to create that same opportunity. In fact, if you did, race would likely be predominating in your decision-making. All, what the Voting Rights Act requires, what the Fourteenth Amendment requires, is that opportunity to elect that the candidate of choice wins usually. 80% of the time is usually. 85%, 90%, yeah, it's looking pretty good. The law does not require absolutes in this context, where you must guarantee a certain outcome, doesn't say that. So the-
So 80%, 80% and 100% are essentially the same outcome from a practical standpoint?
Yeah, I feel pretty good about 80%. Of course, I'd want to see the district. I'd want to know what the decision-making was. I want to, would want to see what, what are the constituent parts of the district. But I think 80% to me sounds pretty good.
So nobody could accuse us of cracking, because now we've gone from 100% to 80% or maybe, you know, 70%, something like that.
A couple of points to that, Commissioner. One, people could accuse you of anything at any time. And just like I tell all my clients, there's no guarantee you're not going to get sued. It's like a game. Every 10 years, the people come out of the woodwork and they sue redistricting plans all over the country. There are a lot of people that I know very well who, that's what they do. They just file lawsuits. Could someone say that? Sure. Is it something that would concern me from a liability perspective? No, because remember, the key is, is there an opportunity to elect? With all the analysis that you heard about, the analysis drives the process. So if you have analysis that backs up your decision, that shows that minorities can elect, usually, that's the standard. The standard is not guarantee. The standard is not 100% of the time. It's usually. And admittedly, usually may have different interpretations for some people. But to me, 80% is usually, and I'm, I'm pretty comfortable about that. So I hope that, that answers your question. Packing and cracking, I think, there are many ways you could look at it. A couple of ways you could look at it very easily. If you have an 80% community, minority community, and you split it up into two, three, or four segments, my question to you would be, why'd you do that? Because that does arguably weaken minority voting strength. Same thing if you have an 80% minority community and you combine it in a district with a non-contiguous community that is 80% Anglo and votes a different way than that minority community. That's, that's dilutive. That has the potential of weakening that community's ability to elect. And that's also a very important aspect in redistricting. I find that, you know, that's why I mentioned population deviations. When you are trying to equalize population, you got to get population from someplace. And sometimes those choices may unintentionally involve dilution. So it is very important to be aware of the communities that are in a given district, communities that you might want to bring in to equalize population. Does that dilute or not? That's an important consideration as you're, as you are actively mapping. And I've seen many times where, both this cycle and the two previous cycles, where a community is added to another community and that ability to elect goes down. So that's, that's a consideration to be aware of as you create your districts and you're balancing population.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right now, the only other hand I see is Commissioner Serbin, and I do want to give him a chance to ask a, a second or third question, but I do want to be fair to other Commissioners. Not seeing any other hands, Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you, Chair, and again, thank you, Dr. Adelson. So just curious, what is this, what's the statute of limitations on bringing a challenge to the final map on VRA grounds?
Well, in a way, I'll answer that by what happened in Arizona 10 years ago. The Supreme Court decided it's, it made its decision reaffirming our maps. They upheld the maps nine to nothing. That was five years, as I recall, after the maps were approved. So I'm not aware offhand that there's a specific statute of limitations. You, you know, if you approve final maps tomorrow, then there's a, a good chance that litigation, both at the state and federal level, could go on for a while. Now, there are some, sometimes the, the lawsuits even go into the next redistricting cycle. I know that that's happened in a couple of places. So as I said, the redistricting litigation has become more intense, more numerous as time has gone on. But this is, it's like the decennial thing to do.
I guess, I'm sorry, Doctor, but I guess what I'm wondering is, is there a point after adopting the map where we can, where we can fit, where, you know, a year, two, five years later, then the, the map won't, there, no one, there won't be an ability to challenge the map on VRA grounds. At some point, that's got to be true, right?
And that will, yeah, to your point, there will continue to be that ability. But I also take your point, I think it's a good one, that the further you go out from final approval, the less likely, as time moves along, that there will be lawsuits. But, you know, it's not something, you can't go to the bank on that. That's not a guarantee. That's just kind of the way how things work. If there are going to be challenges, they likely, there are likely challenges relatively quickly, in part because I'm sure you, like many other jurisdictions, you have elections coming up. So if there are folks who want to challenge what you've done and challenge other redistricting bodies, they tend to move relatively quickly so that they can get a foot in the door before the next election occurs. So that's also a good kind of milepost. But, you know, as I said, I've seen litigation go on for many years after maps are finalized.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Adelson, I think we'll let you go, not seeing any other questions, but with the understanding that we'll see you again on Saturday to talk about some of the most recent maps, some maps that were just posted yesterday, actually, in response to instructions. But thank you very much for that education and the continuing education. It's much appreciated.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to see you. Please, please reach out if there's anything I can do to answer any questions and, and to assist you. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you again. Good night.
Thank you. So Commissioners, we will still remain in this agenda item for now. I did want to preview that next we'll take public comment. And then after that, I think some of those questions may have had relevance for IRC Council. So I may ask Marguerite for some input. And then we'll see about returning to Dr. Gross, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
I'm sorry, I, you're, we're, we're going to come back to the questions that we didn't get, okay.
Correct. We might have to take a motion to suspend the rules, but I promise we'll do that expeditiously. However, with that, I again want to thank the public for their patience in holding off on remarks, which we're about to take. I do want to remind the public of what I said earlier. Any comments related to mapping under this agenda item should be related to Voting Rights Act implications, as we were just discussing with, discussing, sorry, with Mr. Adelson, and looking at his assessment and analysis. More extensive comments on specific maps would, of course, be more than welcome at our November 13th meeting verbally or through any of the number of electronic or written channels that you saw earlier and we'll put up again later. So with that as introduction, and with the understanding that our clerk, David Hall, will pay close attention to how speakers are proceeding and will intervene as necessary. David, do we have any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair. But in advance of today's meeting, I would ask that any members of the public who wish to address the Commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the Raise Hand button on Zoom or by dialing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Speakers will have three minutes to address the Commission, begin with Pamela Hammond, followed by John Kostigan. Pamela Hammond? Pamela, you may need to unmute yourself.
All right. Hello, thank you for offering me the opportunity to ask a question, a really basic question. Where can I read the racially polarized voting study?
Thank you.
And David, I'm going to go ahead and interrupt on that. Ms. Hammond and other members of the public, it was included with our agenda materials. If you go to the IRC website, and perhaps staff can get ready to put that up after the next speaker, but you can find that electronically, and I'm sure our staff will be help, happy to help you locate that later if needed. For right now though, David, please continue with the speakers list. And staff, when you're ready, after the next speaker, please feel free to put that up.
John Kostigan?
Hello again. My, my concern is, you know, and I believe in basically a colorblind voting population. I think most of us vote for what works in our best favor, especially in the East County. But the maps in which you put out have 90% of the population in urban areas of your District 1, and you've spread out District 5 over a very large area of space, which then includes parts of the East County. I feel that the East County has, needs representation, and I don't think it has it under your map.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to address this item? You're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any further requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair.
Very good. Let me just ask staff, there we go, thank you. Okay. So if you go to drawyourcommunity.com, it's frankly going to be the simplest way, and look up today's meeting. And under that, there's a specific agenda item. You can also send an email to- And under that, there's a specific agenda item. You can also send an email to redistrictinginstcounty.ca.gov. And I'm sure somebody on our staff would be happy to email you a copy of that report. And I say that because any of the materials we discussed tonight or at any meeting can be easily requested that, yeah, that email. Because I know that website can be a bit intimidating. Uh, especially for folks who don't regularly use websites for electronic research, and our staff would be more than happy to help. So thanks for putting that up. Um, all right, Commissioners, I did say, uh, first I wanted to, before we left this agenda item. I wanted to turn to Marguerite and see if she had any comments she wanted to offer, and then. Uh, in keeping with what Co-Vice Chair Garcia just raised, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. So we could return to Dr. Gross and finish the Q and A with him. First though, Marguerite.
Um, yes, thank you very much, Chair, and, um, I, um, worked with, um, Mr. Adelson. Um, in, uh, finalizing and reviewing his, uh, opinion to you. And I fully support his comments to you. I think they're wise. And, um, I think he'll be a great assistance to you, giving, given his background. Um, if there's anything that I can answer to help clarify. Uh, what he said, I would be very happy to do that.
So with the understanding we're still in, uh, clarifying questions and comments under this item, having taken public comment, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Just one clarification. Um, as a follow-up to Commissioner Servant's question about, um. Statute of limitations. Is there not a thirty-day referendum period during which any challenges to the map have to take place? And I understand that the, the legal case could take years and years, but isn't it only a thirty-day period?
Just an excellent question. The thirty-day referendum period is not a litigation statute of limitations. It's a period of time during which voters of the county. Can circulate a petition. And if they get a significant, a sufficient number of qualified signatures. They can force your redistricting plan onto the ballot for approval. It's entirely separate from litigation. So excellent question. It's not thirty days. Uh, Dr. Adelson, Bruce Adelson was telling you war stories. Let me give you my most recent Voting Rights Act war stories. I hundred percent agree with him that the farther you get away from enactment. The less likely there is to be a challenge. But I will tell you that the most recent client I had challenged. For a Voting Rights Act Section Two violation was in twenty seventeen. For a plan enacted in twenty eleven. So obviously, we argued. That that was too late, not because of a statute of, of limitations, but because of latches. Things had changed. The evidence had gotten old. Who remembered what we did seven, six, seven years ago? But it was a situation that the court felt the plaintiff needed to have, uh, their day in court. And the trial went forward, uh, for eighteen months. So the bottom line is there is no statute of limitations. That's why we're doing this work upfront to guide you with both data. And law to protect you as best we can. And I am very, very pleased that Bruce Adelson has offered to come back and work with you. In real time on developing your record to support the plan. I think it's been excellent so far, and I wholly support your focus on the Voting Rights Act. It is an important and key issue, but it's one of many, it's driving the car. So how that balance happens is going to be key. So I hope that helps Commissioner Garcia.
It certainly does, and, um, I appreciate that clarification, and I appreciate Commissioner Servant for raising it, um, with, uh, with Bruce Adelson. So it's for me, it, um, it was very enlightening, enlightening discussion, may, maybe not for others, but it, um, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you both. Um, thank you, Commissioner Servant as well. Uh, and we'll take a look at including, uh, some more detail that in our next meeting or two. Uh, to make sure everyone's aware of everything they need to be aware of. Not seeing any other questions. Let me now, before we move on to Agenda Item Six, let me ask now. Um, because I, I still had three, uh, Commissioner requests to ask questions of Dr. Gross. Let me ask for a motion to suspend the rules. So that we can return to Commissioner clarifying questions and comments to Dr. Gross. Mr. Hall, am I making, am I phrasing that motion correctly? Good. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, second. Commissioner Diaz, thank you very much. Any discussion? Thank you, David. Please call the roll for vote.
Commissioner Dossel, I believe, is absent. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen, I believe, is absent. Commissioner Kuglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin.
Aye.
Commissioner Pons.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chair Bean.
Aye.
Chair Bean, that motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. Um, the list I have at the moment is Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Servant, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Inman, you're okay being added to that list. As forth, good. So without objection, Commissioner Diaz, let me make sure we have Dr. Gross and Dr. Masewoka. Good. So Commissioner Diaz, please.
Uh, I pass on my question. I think it was answered earlier.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Commissioner Servant.
Okay, thank you. So, um, thank you for the, the report again, Doctors Gross and Masewoka. Um, so I had a question about the, the third column that, um, that you guys, uh, that, that, that you're referring to, the rate of Latino candidate of choice, the, the winning, the win rate. Um, is that a fairly simple calculation, or was there like some modeling projection or something that, that you got to get to that number?
Yeah, I, I mean, it is a fairly simple calculation. So we take every, um, Latino candidate of choice. In, in the, in the, this particular presentation, that was in a general election. Who, um, was preferred by Latino voters. And looked, are they winning, meaning are they getting fifty percent of the voter more in the district? And then it's the, how frequently is every Latino candidate of choice winning? So this is a, and, and that's the standard that's used to evaluate ability to elect to. Um, it's, it's a, an ar- arithmetic, um, of, uh, assessing how frequently Latino candidates of choice from the past have, have won.
Oh, I see. So when, in, in these other slides, when you say like map, like six and draft map six and seven, those are backward looking.
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at statewide exogenous elections. Where Latino candidates of choice have been identified from the RPV report. So not necessarily people that won in the county or the ones statewide, but who are preferred by Latino voters. And then the, it's a calculation of the percentage of time that those candidates of choice are winning.
I see.
So we're not projecting onto the future, right? Cause that's, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. Okay. Um, yeah, and then I, um. I wanted to clarify, you performed an analysis on the top three districts with Latinos CBAP numbers. But that wasn't because there's a requirement for us to create three Latino ability to elect districts, right? I mean, I, I'm, I think that's pretty obvious. I just wanted to, to make sure that that was clarified.
Yeah, so there, yeah, a couple of things. There's a dilution from a data standpoint. Isn't about just creating a district, right? Like, so if you had one district that was an ability to elect district and four districts spread minority voters out evenly. You know, that'd be something you'd want to be concerned about not doing, right? Um, so that, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to talk about more than one. Um, you know, this is, the, some of this is legal, but from a data standpoint, if you think about the Jingles prong, um, you know, the legal stuff, I, I ask, I definitely ask Mr. Adelson or, um, um. Ms. Leone and, uh, but from a data standpoint, if you can draw a district. That is a fifty percent or more district of a group. Um, then that would suggest you have to draw an ability to elect district, right? So if you can draw one, you gotta draw one. You can, you have to draw an ability to elect district. You could draw two, you have to draw two. So the, I'm not, we're not suggesting that you have to have two or three. Uh, but you would have to look at the data and the map jars would have to see about one versus two or three, right? Um, you can, if you don't mind also, is, can I address one of the questions you asked to Mr. Adelson a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Uh, yeah, I, I figured, yeah, sorry, uh, thank you. Thank you for letting me, I was gonna bring it up. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, did you want to follow up?
Oh, no, no, good, good.
Yeah, so I mean, the, you'd asked about the, some of the public comments about white candidates of choice and like, like. Um, I think it was implied that we didn't analyze white candidates of choice, but it's, I, we're emphasizing Latino candidates of choice. We actually did look at white candidates of choice. So we looked at every single supervisor election from two thousand twelve to two thousand and twenty. Um, in four of the districts, white candidates of choice win at eighty percent to a hundred percent of the time. Right? So I, I just wanna, I, we definitely did look at all racial groups and the win rates of those groups. And so one of the reasons that we're emphasizing the Latino candidates of choice. And then also the potential of coalition districts where we talked about with, uh, multiple, uh, groups, um. Is because of that. And so I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose that, that I think that's important to remember that, like historically, white candidates of choice have won. In four of the five districts in San Diego County. Um, and then in one district, Latino candidates of choice have tended to, tended to win. And so that's, um, one, and so you know, the, just from the data standpoint of like, why, why are we considering voting rights? For Latino candidates of choice, Asian-American candidates of choice, black candidates of choice? It's because in eighty percent of the districts, white candidates of choice have won. And so that's an important data point to keep in mind.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you, um, voicing that. So, um, and then I just would like to echo Commissioner, Commissioner Ponze's, um, earlier. Um. Uh, support of, of, of analysis on, on the, on the, on. You had, there was already, you had already mentioned two other groups in your, in your study, so I would support further analysis of those two groups as well.
Are you, just to clarify, are you talking about you, you would like to see, um, ability to elect, um, or propensity of black candidates of choice of Asian-American? And, uh, black candidates of choice, is that, is that?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, and then Commissioner Inman.
Um, so. My question might actually sort of, um. Be related to what Commissioner Servant just asked. Um. And I understand that the numbers are not identical in terms of, um, ability to elect for Asian-Americans, um, Latinos and blacks. But given the coalition voting that the evidence reflects. Um, would it be equally accurate to describe ability to elect? As not only Latina, uh, you know, Latino candidates of choice. But to also say Asian-American candidates of choice or black candidates of choice? I'm not sure if that, if I'm, um, being clear in my question, but I'm just wondering if we. If, if it wouldn't be accurate to, to describe that data in that way as well.
Just to clarify, do you mean the data we presented this evening, or do you mean sort of in theory we could do?
Yes, in theory, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. No, so we could do that. And I mean, that's what, for, for future draft maps. We could definitely analyze ability to elect for Asian-American voters. Um, and I mean, one of the, it's, one of the reasons we included Asian-American voters in the report. And did racial polarization was to assess our Asian-American voters voting in a polarized way with white voters, and we find some evidence of that in the, in San Diego County, right? And so, um, the, it's just like we presented the examples and case studies of how you could analyze ability to elect of Latino candidates of choice. You, um, could, we can also do the same thing for Asian-American candidates of choice. Um, the, the numbers, right? So if you think about five districts and the percentage of Asian-Americans in the county. I think mathematically, it would be hard to draw a fifty percent Asian-American district, right? But I mean, I, I read Bruce's report before the meeting, and Bruce noticed that, noted that if there are communities of interest. That are, that could potentially be influence in districts, that that's something that you could consider. So you take a look at what he read in the report about influence for, um, for groups like Asian-American voters, for instance.
So let me just ask the question, if I, if I may, a little bit differently. So on the table where you show, uh, I guess it's like District Two and District Three specifically in those maps that you, those sort of test cases. Um, where you show, um, in those District Two or Three, which are basically the same geographic areas. Um, you showed an eighty percent or a hundred percent ability for Latinos. To elect a candidate of choice, but really they were doing that in coalition with, um, black and Asian voters. So my question is, would it not also be accurate to say that those. Um, are situations where blacks and Asian-Americans are also able to elect their candidate of choice? Since we're not, right? Does that? That, that's like my question.
And now we look.
Instead of just saying it's a Latino candidate of choice, but to expand the way we understand or describe that situation.
I mean, I think the first thing to point out in terms of the data is that, especially when we're looking at exogenous elections for statewide office. We see pretty clear coalition voting. In other words, that Asian-American, black and Latino voters typically do support the same candidate. So I, I think what you're saying, Commissioner Garcia, is that while we are labeling. The candidate of choice as a candidate of choice of Latinos, that, that in most of the cases, yes. Because Asian-American, black and Latino voters in San Diego County in exogenous elections do support the same candidate. We actually could say, yes, that, that, that is also the Asian-American candidate of choice. And that is, or that is the, also the black voter candidate of choice. Yes.
Thank you. And then I just have one other quick question, and that has to do with the, um, equal opportunity, you know, opportunity to elect. And, and Commissioner Inman was asking about the eighty percent versus the hundred percent. I'm, I'm gonna ask a more basic question. Is fifty, is fifty percent plus one an equal opportunity? Is that? Also considered equal opportunity?
I would, so fifty percent plus one, meaning winning rates of candidates of choice? I would say that is, from a data standpoint, that is not. I would say that that is a relatively low propensity. Um, for a candidate of choice to win.
So what would be the floor, sixty, seventy-five, or eighty, or do we not really know? Or is that, you gotta go by case?
So I, it's, it's a little bit more than case by case, but this is one of those things where. The, the, the higher the propensity is, the more likely it is an ability to elect. Um, right? But like, so yes, eighty versus one hundred, those are both very high ability to elect districts. But then I'd probably just like to see the map if it's not in that range before kind of weighing in on the data, yeah.
But that helps me understand, um, that, that set of, um, that, that idea a little bit better. Thank you.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Inman.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, so the first kind of goes, uh, back on to, uh, what Commissioner Garcia was saying. In that column where you talked about, uh, uh, the rate Latino candidates' choice wins. The only numbers that I ever see are one hundred, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty and zero. Is that a function of the number of elections? And so we're never going to see anything in between. Is that true?
Yeah, cause we're looking at six elections in this case for, and so it's, yeah, another way to think about it would be six out of six elections, five out of six, four out of six, and we can report it that way too. Um, you know, we do, we do have data in the, um, report on racial polarization in the primaries, and we did not include that in this example. We could, we can add primary elections, which I think can be really important. Um, for the ability to elect analysis in future, uh, draft maps, and so that would add additional data. Um, primaries are a little bit different than general elections, but I think analyzing both primary and general could be helpful and bring even more data to bear on ability to elect.
Okay, um, uh, also to, uh, dovetail again off our Commissioner Garcia's comment about, uh, different, um, racial categories. I mean, could there just simply be minority candidate of choice and? You know, it would just lump everybody into a minority category against, um, the, the, I guess, the white candidate of choice. the, I guess, the white candidate of choice?
Yeah, so that, that, that's probably a little more legal question. The, we, the, I don't know if Margarita wants to weigh in on that, like the, there, generally, it's for a specific group, and then we are showing evidence of coalition voting across groups, right? And so, the.
So right now, we have like a three-way coalition, essentially.
Yeah.
It's, it's three races together, and so you could combine those three races, black, Asian and Hispanic, and call, you're calling that a coalition, essentially.
Yeah, I would still keep a focus on the individual group, and then is that individual group having an ability to elect candidate of choice? And that may be happening in coalition with other voters of color.
I mean, we have to remember that, you know, it is a context specific to San Diego County. So in San Diego County, we are seeing Latino voters, Asian American voters and black voters supporting the same candidate. But that's not necessarily the case everywhere, right? So it's really important for us to understand, right, that there, in other contexts, that there are different candidates of choice depending on the racial group that you're talking about. It's just in this case in San Diego, you are seeing that. So it is, it is, in, in this, in this question, this is much more because of what we're seeing in San Diego, that, that you are seeing that, but it's not, it's not necessarily always the case. So I think we want to be cautious about always lumping in together all communities of color.
Okay. The other thing that it seems, if you, if we were to generalize from everything that we've seen, and I think you talked about sufficient populations again. The only place where there is sufficient population to, to have a, a minority candidate of choice win is right on the south, in the south area and in urban San Diego. That's the only place where there's sufficient population of minority, minorities present to construct the district that it potentially could occur. In the North County, there is a concentration in and around Escondido, but by itself, that doesn't get you a large enough district if it's diluted when you put it with the other areas. So it only seems that it's down kind of central San Diego and in the Southern Bay area where, where, you know, you could potentially construct these districts. Is that a valid statement or not?
That, so that I would have to say, I would, that'd be more of a flow and mapping statement, right? So I mean, we have looked at the census data, but we have not drawn maps. And as VRA, RPV, statistical experts, we don't do the maps, we do the racial polarization analysis, and then we evaluate the maps after you draw them. So I'm hesitant to say definitively that's the case, right? There are, there are, as we talked about a few weeks ago, you know, there's Asian American voters in the central part of the county, there's Latino, Asian American and black voters in the southern part of the county, there's Latino voters, as you mentioned, in the Escondido area. But we have not, nor should we draw maps to see if they, if those would be possible in other parts of the county. So that'd be something to ask John and Flo about.
Could I ask a question too? Have you seen a community map that has drawn three majority Latino districts in, in any of the recommendations? No, okay. Because oftentimes, sometimes what we do find is that the community maps have been able to draw more majority, minority districts than, say, the consultant hired, because people from the community really know their community, right? So they, they have a more nuanced understanding about how to draw those maps.
Yeah, we've seen it with two, which, you know, is the central area and then the southern area. But it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I, I accept your answer, it's more of a demographic question than it is something that you can answer with what you've done, so thank you very much.
Was that two Latino majority districts or two majority minority districts?
Well, one of them is a coalition. The central San Diego one is coalition, clearly the South Bay is where Latino is the majority in that district. The other one isn't majority Latino though.
And interestingly enough, I'll just add as footnote, one map submitted by the public as a coalition of those groups, of those same groups that you see the voting patterns in. It's just an interesting way to look at it, and I think, again, Dr. Grist, I take your point. Looking at the specific maps really becomes important in this, and appropriately at this stage. Okay, I have Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Serbin, and then with the commission's permission, I'd like to move on, not least to respect Christian and Natalie's time. But it's a fascinating discussion, I don't want to cut it off. Commissioner Hanson, please.
I just wanted to comment on the last discussion about the district in what currently is District Five. And I don't know that anybody has drawn, drawn a map of this, but it's certainly been described that if you include Escondido and the, the back country, north of Escondido and Oceanside, in that northernmost district, you would have a majority Latino district, but you'd have to take Carlsbad out of it. You don't, you're shaking your head, no. But I mean, what you, when you put Carlsbad in that northernmost district and you take Escond, and you don't include Ballbrook and all those northern tier areas, it doesn't work out that way. But if you took Carlsbad, but, or Carlsbad out, I thought it could.
It doesn't quite get there, based on what I've looked at. So, but Flo could, could potentially also do that, so.
And Commissioner Inman, I'll ask you as SPOC to see if there's a way to integrate that into the discussion on Saturday.
Yes.
Thank you for that, but thank you, Commissioner Hanson, that's good. All right, Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you, so, Dr. Gross and Masawaka, were you able to identify certain areas of the county in which coalition voting is particularly strong or weak? Do we know where, where it's, where it's most prone to happen and where it's least prone to happen, where, where specifically in the county? What areas?
Yeah, I mean, so in the draft map six and seven, that area around the district that's north of District One was area that had coalition voting based on the ability to elect analysis, and then also in our own racial polarization. The, there's coalition voting in District One also, right? So that was, that was something that we found, if I recall in the report, right? This does vary depending on the election that you're looking at and, and so on. And then there's some other evidence of coalition voting being weaker in other parts of the county, the further north you go, but there's also less data, right, in certain parts of the county for coalitions, because the other parts of the county tend to be mostly white and Latino. And so the evidence is not as strong, in part because there's mostly just two racial or ethnic groups in the, some of the parts of the county. Natalie, did you want to add anything?
In, in the new draft of the report, we really focused in, in response to Commissioner Ponz's request, Latino and black coalition voting. And we did find in your current District Two, in particular, at, at the primary level, we saw two out of three, the elections had pretty clear coalition voting between Latino and African American. So that's the main one on the top of my head, mainly because we had just assessed that for Commissioner Ponz.
Yeah, I mean, and I'd said one more thing on that question, I'm sorry, I know that we're getting going. But sort of just like the takeaway, right, is these are really, these are really important questions. So like, we do have evidence that there's coalition voting. Use that evidence, remember that when you draw the maps. And then like, if you draw a map where you happen to pull in a section where there's not as much coalition voting, we're, we're gonna find that in the ability to elect analysis, and it's gonna come back as a forty percent win district, and we'll be like, that one didn't work, right? But you can, you can operate with the, the empirical knowledge from the report that there is coalition voting between black, Latino and Asian American voters in a decent part, a decent sections of the county, right? You also can remember that there is racial polarization between white voters and voters of color, and white voters and Latino voters, white voters and black voters, and white voters and Asian American voters in, in a lot of our analyses. And so kind of your guidepost should be, don't worry too much about it being exactly right, as much as there is evidence that coalition voting is happening. And then you can draw maps with that in mind, and then we'll assess it when the maps are done, right? And then we can come back and say if they're okay or not, based on, based on the, the likelihood, or excuse me, the ability to elect candidates of, candidates of choice. You know, and then just remember also that this is like, I, I just want to echo something Bruce said, that this is not, this is like a really important factor, right, to remember. And so like, we're talking only about this cuz that's our job as racial polarization analysis. But like, your job is to consider, you know, the population and then voting rights and, and then, and so on. And so make sure you get the order correct with the advice of your legal counsel. But the, the evidence does suggest that there's coalition, there's coalition voting. And there's things you can do, you know, I think population deviations are things you can take into account in order to make districts a little bit more or less of particular groups, if that's something that's important. I would ask the legal counsel about the ability to do that in local elections, and you know, those sort of things that are from a data standpoint. You know, if you're trying to draw certain kinds of districts, you want to think about coalition voting and polarization, and then other things that are constraints and other things where you have opportunities.
And one of the great things about this discussion has been how it shows the data piece of the puzzle fitting with other aspects of the puzzle. And Commissioner Ponz, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, even Commissioner Inman, who I will still put on the data side of things, because I know he enjoys it so much. But we have talked about what we're hearing from the community as well. And having that COI input when a community says, we have a lot in common with this other community, all of a sudden, we're hearing verbally about that coalition, and we're seeing data that indicate that coalition. It, that's where I see the synergies going. To that end, I'll just, I'll offer two footnotes without looking for comment unless you want to offer it. I'd like to continue to hear about crossover voting, especially in the forthcoming maps. I, I, it, it's partly just a selfish concern on my part, I haven't thought enough about it. But I do think with some of the most focused comments we're getting, having data that specifically address crossover voting and what kind of patterns we see in some of the key lines, such as the ones Commissioner Hanson was describing, I think would be really interesting. And then something else I wanted to pick up on, I don't know what constitutes statistically significant data when it comes to a smaller population, like the Chaldean population. But since it's come up in our public comment, I think it's really on us to indicate where that's something where we see comment, particularly on community of interest, that's coming at a very, very key point on a map. I think we've, we've heard different communities say, this part, this town or this city is with us, that's part of our community of interest. And all of a sudden, a different community of interest in a different part of the county names that same town for different reasons. It goes to the wonderful diversity we have in this county, but it's also something I think we need to keep in mind to balance. And from a data point, I think it's Mr. Edelson was saying, but I think it's indicated in some of the report itself, what constitutes a statistically significant population, even if it's, it's hard to measure it when we see it, say, operating in coalition as one of several groups? Just something to lay out, I, I don't have nearly enough specifics on it.
I mean, one, one question I would, or the response would be that, some of that could be a legal question. And I don't know if Margarita wants to weigh in, are, would Chaldean voters be considered a protected group under the Voting Rights Act?
Margarita?
I'm, I'm here.
You want to address that tonight?
I do want to, do I want to? That is not, thank you, Dr. Gross. That is not a classic group that has been considered for protection under the Voting Rights Act. But I do not want to limit your discretion in any way. You have, this commission has broader discretion than what is required by the Voting Rights Act. You can consider coalitions. Kudos for looking at crossover. Kudos for looking at influence. Kudos for looking at communities that work well with others. You have broad discretion. So I think none of this should be discouraged, because it's not on all fours with what the Voting Rights Act says.
Terrific, thank you very much for that. See, no other questions, Dr. Gross, Dr. Masawaka? Do you have any other points you wanted to just leave behind?
No, we're, we're happy to come back and talk, and we, we're, it's good to see everyone again, so.
Good, thank you very much for your patience, really appreciate your flexibility. All right. We move on to agenda item six. Discussion on possible approval of enhancements to the IRC website and associated expense. We give, begin with a presentation that was unavoidably delayed, but we're very glad Commissioner Serbin came out on the right end of that delay. But speaking in his role as the IRC's Public Outreach and Engagement Services SPOC, Commissioner Serbin, the floor is yours.
Yes, hi, and good evening, fellow commissioners, thank you for your attention. I'd like to address you on this matter regarding website enhancements to our website, so let's just jump right in. Next slide, okay? And then so what we'd like to do, we've, we've been talking about this for a while. This is what the website in its fully updated state will look like, to give you an idea. And what we're doing is we're using, that website is, is a, is a template that we'll be able to use. And so just, thank you, this is a template that we'll be able to use and will, will, will use a, a website that will look similar to this in the way that the information is organized and presented visually and, and all that. So thank you. Excited. And then just to remind commissioners to, and give you some background on how we got here. Pursuant to the RFP and the Contract for Outreach and Engagement Services, the contractor was required to provide enhancements to the website to maximize interest, user friendliness, traffic and engagement. And during the RFP process, a clarification was provided by the Ad-Hoc Committee regarding contractors' responsibilities for the website. That was, it's anticipated that the contractors' requested changes will be in coordination with county personnel, and the contractor will be given administrative access to the site. So as desired, additional enhancements are now available through the county's IT subcontractor to offer a more user-friendly experience that now includes options for larger images, graphics, broader color schemes and additional customizations. There are costs for these website enhancements that were not included in the ABASD contract. Next slide, please. And so we have had to adjust the, the timeframe of implementing this, unfortunately, because we're now, we're only now taking the action item up, so again, I very much apologize for the delay. But this is now what we're looking at. So fortunately, County of San Diego's IT subcontractor now has the capacity to begin developing the website as soon as the approval is granted. And the bottom line is that the website would be live by December ninth. Next slide, please. So again, the estimated costs are, the subcontractor estimates that a minimum of ten thousand is needed to set up the site and the template and style and to, you know, the initial startup. And because website projects are dynamic, the subcontractor recommends a maximum budget of fifteen for any potential contingencies. And these costs include training hours that the IT subcontractor will provide to ABASD and county staff. So bottom line, total cost estimate for the enhancement to our website is between ten to fifteen thousand. Next slide, please. So again, in summary, the benefits of improving the website, improved accessibility, usability, navigability. Also, this will serve to improve our records retention, because the website must be retained for ten years. As you know, that's the duration of time of our commission. And also, this will enhance the public's access to all our materials af, once the website's live, and then also after the December fifteenth deadline. As you undoubtedly heard earlier, we had a caller have much difficulty finding, you know, certain things on our website. So hopefully, we'll be able to avoid those types of issues with the public moving forward. So thank you, and I appreciate any discussion or questions that you, that my commissioners might have.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Serbin. Before we move to a motion and discussion, let me ask David if there are any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item.
Thank you, Chair Bim.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Any members of the public who wish to address the commission on enhancements to the IRC website, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by dialing star nine if you're calling in. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment, Chair Bame.
Very good. Um, as this is an action item that requires a motion before discussion, let me ask if there is a motion to approve enhancements to the IRC website, including an associated expense of approximately 10 to 15,000 dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina, second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Diaz, very good. So I have Commissioners Pons, Larson, Brown, Russ. Commissioner Pons, please.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Servin, for the effort put in. Uh, my question is to what end? I mean, I'm looking at the FOC of nine December. That's six days before the due date of turning in the report at a cost of 10 to 15K. So I understand the intent, but I don't understand the outcome and the relevance that you are doing. I really appreciate you trying to have the public to understand and pull information out after we've done our report. But I don't believe it justifies a cost of 10 to 15,000 dollars. Thank you.
And Commissioner Servin, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that was actually a, a question, but I heard enough of a question there. If you wanted to respond, you, you may.
Of course, please.
Uh, I mean, you know, I, I wanted to bring the, the item forward to the full commission for, for consideration and, and approval at its discretion. I think personally, my view is that the website is, could use improvement. I mean, we all saw an example of that today. And, you know, that, that it's happening so late in the process is unfortunate. But to continue to maintain the website as it is for the remainder of the portion of, for the remainder of the eight or nine years that we have, is, that's, I, that's an, that's an unacceptable, uh, condition for me.
Very good. Commissioner Larson?
Yes, I too want to thank Commissioner Servin for this and to our contractor, A, B, A, S, D. My question is, who is the current, uh, County of San Diego IT subcontractor? And what is the period of their contract? We're talking now about a 10-year period from now. Will they still be the contractor then? What happens to the data if they're not?
I, Servin or Barbara? I can answer to that. So maybe, yes, thanks, Barbara.
Very, thank you, Chair. And, uh, Commissioner Larson, the current contractor, IT contractor for the County of San Diego is Peraton. Um, and, um, what we've done in the past, and we're happy to, to confirm, but, uh, anytime there's a transition in IT, we would, uh, maintain, uh, the, the websites. The County of San Diego would still maintain it. And there would be a transition if there's a new contractor.
You're saying they would do it without a subcontractor if the current subcontractor was not retained? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the question was, who's the current contractor, the IT contractor for the County of San Diego? That's Peraton. If there was a change in their contract in the future, uh, we would still maintain this, uh, new proposed website within the County of San Diego.
Okay, but it might be done by another subcontractor.
Correct. We, we've outsourced our IT services for, for many years now.
Okay, thank you for telling me that.
Commissioner Brown. I'm, I'm sorry, I should just add the list I have right now. Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Russ, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Brown, please.
Okay, my question is similar to the previous two questions. But I was wondering, is this just basically a cosmetic change to the website? Or is there a functionality change to it too? Are they gonna? And, and, you know, three or four years from now, that might all be old information as far as it's going to retain what we've done now. But, um, why does it have to continue on into the future like that? And we can just store it somewhere, I guess. But do you think people will be accessing it two or three years from now?
I would say that, I'm, I, well, first off, like, I'm not, I'm not, I think the cosmetic is the functional when it comes to the website. So, I, I, I think that's how I would respond to the question of whether it's strictly cosmetic or functional. I think, I think that, I think the two are almost the same.
Okay.
I think, um, whether people are going to be accessing this website 10, you know, five or six years from now, they will be if it's a lot easier to use.
Commissioner Russ, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, uh, Pons, uh, made the same, um, observation that, that I did, that it would be live six days before, uh, 15 December. And my guess is that there would be kind of an exponential decay after, uh, after some time of, of, of hits on, on our website. I'd be interested in knowing, how many hits have we had on our current website? And has, has it had an, uh, an increase here recently? We certainly have had an increase in e-commerce. We've certainly have had an increase in, um, our comments during our meetings, um, as well. So, I'm, um, I'm, I'm interested in, um, in knowing just how many hits we, we've, we've had. And just to add another, uh, and to have it onboard six days before our final report, uh, I'm, I'm really wondering about the value of that. Could you respond, uh, Commissioner Servin, please?
So I'll say this, every single piece of advertising and marketing and collateral material is directing the public to our website. So if everyone is okay and satisfied with this current, current condition of the website and maintaining that in the way it is, then, okay. I'm not. So, I mean, that's, 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 I think, that's kind of where I am. I mean, if you're, if you guys are cool with the website being the way it is and maintaining that for the next 10 years, then, okay. But, I mean, we literally had someone call us today and ask us how to find one of the, you know, easy, like, a basic document. Why isn't it easy to navigate to that document on the website? And why is it that the last six days is unimportant to, to not improve the website? Why is it the, the remaining balance of the eight years of this commission, it's not, it's unimportant for us to, to improve the website? We're talking about 15,000 dollars. That's, that's a, that's a, that's a minuscule portion of the total budget of this, of this commission. And we're, every single piece of advertising that we're, that we have addressing the public is directing the public to that one website. And we're, we're not willing to improve it? That doesn't?
How many, how many people have called in saying they've had a hard time on our website? Just, just the one? Do, do we have any others that have called in and said that they?
Well, we've had, we've had numerous, we've had numerous public comment that have seemed misinformed or misdirected. And I would imagine that if our website were better structured and easier to obtain information, some of that comment may not have, may have been directed at a, at the more relevant commission.
Yeah, thanks for your efforts. I appreciate that.
So, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, Commissioner Diaz, Co-Vice Chair Katerina, Commissioner Hanson, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yes, um, so Commissioner Servin, I, I really do want to thank you for making this effort. And, um, and I agree, um, with you that our website isn't, um, as user-friendly as we would like it to be. And, um, that's why we actually, I was on the ad hoc committee that wrote the RFP and we absolut- and so was Commissioner Diaz and Commissioner Katerina. And, um, and I am also disappointed that we were not able to address this any sooner. However, I agree with Commissioner Pons and Commissioner Russ. I, I, I feel like it's, um, too late in the game. I think maybe the county can, you know, make some fixes to the website. I am not con- I'm, I, I don't really have any idea how much the public will go to our website once the redistricting is, is done. And at this point, I think that what we should do is let the next, uh, independent redistricting commission in 10 years, develop their own website, which they're likely to do. So I, I, I know it's, does, in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, 10 or 15,000 dollars. But it's not my money, it's taxpayer money. And if, if, as I believe the next commission will probably spend money on the website, I'd rather defer to them and not spend it twice.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Servin, for the thoughtful presentation. As I recall from my, my time on the ad hoc, um, RFP committee for our outreach consultant, one of the things that we wrote into the scope of work was to create enhancements to the website to make it more user-friendly. Um, I wanted to just kind of, if you could point out a few things, um, specifically, uh, Commissioner Servin, that you think, um, made the website not user-friendly. Uh, I think that would be helpful to just kind of put into context here, um, the bigger picture. And I do think people are going to continue to visit our website after the maps have been adopted. So I think there's definitely a use for having, um, a better website. I'm all for improving, uh, things. But, um, I also, again, you know, noticing that it's taxpayer money we're spending, even though 10,000 dollars, uh, typically is, um, I'm not an IT person, but to develop and redesign a website, um, does take some money. Um, so I think it would really be helpful for me to decide tonight what specifically, could be enhanced to make this a better user-friendly website.
So I think I'll defer to staff to answer that because I don't exactly have the specific, what, what exactly is going to happen on the, with the template and what the template is, how the template will reorganize the website. So does, do you, do you, the staff, can you, are you better equipped to answer that question?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure if I'm better equipped to answer the question, but I'll attempt to respond to what I think the inquiry is. Just a couple of clarifications. The webs, the current website as it is, while we were waiting for the contractor to come onboard and for the contractor, one of those items was, was going to be that enhancement. Internally, staff are the one that have been doing this, the website. And that's why there's no, has been no cost. And, um, so we've been doing that internally. We've added, you know, the training, all the different stuff on there. Um, it, when you look at the template that Commissioner Servin brought up, um, this is mirroring what I believe we heard from, uh, Single Point of Contact and others. If you go to, uh, one of the boards, uh, of supervisors, uh, website or site, you can see the difference between that and what's sort of the, the regular county website. So those are some of the difference, some of the visual, um, some of the more robust maybe, uh, search. But, uh, the website as it stands right now has been solely updated and added and adjusted internally by IRC staff to meet the needs. But the fill is different, the look is different. If you compare that against maybe one of the other, uh, like the supervisors, uh, webpages. But it's mostly that template and that website.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Hi, uh, thank you, everyone, um, for your comments on this. This is, you know, as, as both, um, Commissioner Servin and Commissioner Diaz and Commissioner Garcia mentioned, we did, we have talked about this, we talked about it in our ad hoc committee. Um, when I look at our website today, uh, I am thinking about what are we leaving for the next group to come in? And if you go back and look at what the California State Commission did, is their website from 2010 is still live. And, and they link to it and you can see it. And so what we're going to be, what our predecessors are going to be looking at is going to be something that is, um, very, very basic and not very structured. And it will be hard to find information based on the structure we have today. Staff has done a great job getting all this information on the site, but it, the functionality is very low. And in my mind, and I, and I think Commissioner Diaz and I are like-minded in this, in this respect, that 10,000 dollars to improve, significantly improve the functionality of a website is, is a very good price. So, um, that is my, my take on this. It, it, it will help people at the very end. And I think that is important. When we get down to the very end, we're going to have a lot more traffic. And I believe even for those few days, it will be, um, much appreciated. And, and looking further down the road, what are we going to get? What are we going to leave behind? And how easy is it, is it going to be for people to find things in the future? Because it will be there. And, and what is, um, and I'm, I mean, well, I don't want to sound like I'm very, um, vain, but what do we want to leave behind? What image do we want to leave behind of our commission? I think it is important to, to leave behind a very professional, organized, structured website. That's my opinion. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Hi, thanks to everybody who's been working on this and especially for you, Commissioner Servin. But we, we all understood, understood and understand now that the purpose of the website was to bring citizens to the website to inform us about what needed to be considered when making our decisions. By the time this goes live, we will have made our decision. And if we were to get 100 new e-mails after, after the, the 10th of December, are we really in a position to be able to address them and reconsider everything we've considered up till now? And as a last comment, 10 to 15,000 dollars is a significant amount of money. And I don't see spending on, on something that might be used in the future to judge me. I can live with that because the, the website doesn't reckon, doesn't represent me at all. What's going to represent me is the map. And I think that's important for us to understand. And lastly, we have no concept of what the technology will, will be in another 10 years. Anymore than, did you, have I looked at the one from our last year? No, or last time? No. I mean, we just, I think that's a, trying to project something that we really cannot assess. So I say we do not spend the money to do something that we should have done, unfortunately, six months ago. So that's my idea. Thank you.
So just to address a couple of points there, Commissioner Hanson, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. And, and, and to, um, bring up, uh, Commissioner Katerina, I just wanted to reinforce what Commissioner Katerina said. We've, as this process has gone along, we, the rate at which we receive public comment has increased. And we adopt, and, and, and we adopt our, our, you know, December 6th is an important date for us. And we don't get to a final date until after December 10th. So just, you, there, there is, I mean, I would, I would maybe ask Chair Bame to, 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 to address the question of whether we would welcome public comment on December 10th and afterward, and whether we're able to consider that in, as far as our, what our procedure is. So maybe you could clarify that, Chair Bame?
Well, just factually, um, even under our current timeline, while a decision is made, uh, or may be made, I should say, and is scheduled to be made on December, on or about December 9th, there is certainly a chance of continued work that might require additional work by the commission, uh, and therefore public comment on it up to the deadline named in statute of December 15th. I'll also remind commissioners, as we'll hear in just a minute, that there, the map is not the only thing we are required to produce. And that smile you see on Co-Vice Chair Garcia's face is referencing the final report that we have to issue. That also, I would, I'm certain all commissioners would agree, is something, uh, that would deserve and be open to public comment. Whether that's sufficient for the website or not is of course a separate question. But factually, I, I can certainly see justification, and I'll make, offer some comments of my, of my own in a minute, uh, beyond December 9th for public input. Whether that's a winning argument or not, I think is a matter for each commission to address. Okay, so with that, Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, and it's either for Commissioner Servin or-
Yeah, I just have a quick question, and it's either for Commissioner Servin or for Barbara. Um, the timeline says that um we would have a website, a new um website up and running on December ninth. But what is the, how confident are we that this IT subcontractor is actually going to turn this work around and that we're actually going to be live on December ninth? Or is it just as likely that that date is going to slip and it may not happen before even December fifteenth? Any any comment on that?
Commissioner Servin, did you want me to?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Barbara.
Um, I would just say that it um a as with any sort of uh project, um, whether it's IT or remodeling, you know, a room or remodeling a facility, um, that date could slip. That is very realistic that it could slip. We're going into the holidays. We tried to plan based on the discussion with the contractor, uh, build in some of those potential delays. Um, but yes, that that date could slip.
All right, um, let me just offer a couple of thoughts. Um, first off, personally, I'm I'm myself likely to vote no, both because the need to manage a transition on or about December ninth is a little overwhelming to me. Um, not that it shouldn't be happening, but the risks that could be involved in that. Um, I want to just assure the commission, if this motion was to pass, I and the officers, I think, would work with staff closely to make sure there was no obstacle whatsoever to our ongoing work. And I am convinced, after having talked about that some time ago with Commissioner Servin, we can accomplish that. Um, but that said, it will take some work, and that's work that would be hard. Um, I do agree that ten to fifteen thousand dollars for a website uh enhancement at this stage is a considerable amount of money. Although I would remind commissioners that not, it wasn't too long ago that several commissioners were advocating to spend six figures on uh new and outside staff. And to my mind, we should be consistent about that. Uh, in that scheme, i- in that framework, I should say, ten to fifteen thousand dollars really isn't a lot of money. And I think that was part of the discussion going on earlier about this. A couple of other points to keep in mind, um, no one's mentioned working with journalists and media representatives and advocacy groups seeking to uh access the website. I can tell you from personal experience, it can be difficult and particularly under time pressure. And part of me says, you know, that's exactly the time where I'm our the spotlight will be shining brightest on us and something we could use to make the public affairs angle of our work more easily accessible is well worth the money. Um, just something to consider. Regarding the future, I I found some of the comments really, really useful and informative and worth keeping in mind. No, we don't know what uh technology will be like in ten years. But we do know the likelihood is that past technology will be even more accessible. And therefore, I wouldn't necessarily vote against this simply because it won't be relevant. In fact, far from it, something that we could hand to the next commission as they get started, rather than having them have to delve through what a redistricting commission does for three, four, or five months before they can get the website to the point they like, I think is a a considerable point in favor of doing this. Again, my hesitation is the amount. Um, but I do think there's some advantage in update. And then uh perhaps the single most compelling reason for to keep in mind, I think, and why I don't want commissioners to be surprised that if this motion fails, I may seek to bring it back up after December fifteenth uh for the following reason, voter education. We are going to be asking a lot of the public to understand what our final map looks like. The registrar of voters will do considerable work, I think, on educating voters as to what the new map means for them. But I also can see, and maybe it's even at a price cheaper than the ten to fifteen thousand estimate, because we could focus it on post-final map steps. That something more accessible to voters would be well worth some money. Exactly how much, I'm not sure. So I'll be voting against it tonight, but I very much am keeping in mind, we may want to revisit this. As always, I'll stand by the commission's will on whether and how we bring it back up uh for reconsideration if it should fail tonight. But I did want to lay all that out. I also personally wanted to add my thanks to Commissioner Servin. Uh, I know it wasn't for lack of effort. Um, and it it really is complex trying to navigate all the different parts. Barbara hinted at some of them uh to revising a website like this. So thank you, Commissioner, for the work you put into it.
Was all the staff?
And so with that, not seeing any other requests. David, would you please call the roll for a vote on the motion to approve enhancements to the IRC website, including an associated expense of approximately ten to fifteen thousand dollars?
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. No. Commissioner Dostal, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Servin?
Hi.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Inman is a no. Commissioner Kugliak?
Nay.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Regretfully, no.
Chair Bame?
Nay.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
No.
Commissioner Russ?
No.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Chen, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Pons?
Nay.
With Commissioners Servin, Katerina, and Diaz voting aye, all other commissioners who are present voting no. The motion fails to achieve the required affirmative vote. The vote is three ayes, nine noes.
Thank you very much, commissioners, for the discussion, and thanks for the points that I hope we can bear in mind. We turn to item seven, a progress update on the draft of the IRC statutorily required final report. I'll turn to Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Rosette, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Um, I think we were gonna show, we were just kind of kind of scroll through the report. Sorry about that. I still have a landline. Um, so I'm just going to give you all, we'll go through this quickly. It's the last item on the agenda. But I we are going to scroll through this quickly. I know we have been receiving so many reports. I um, I can imagine if you haven't opened uh this particular um item and looked at the the draft of our final report, I um wouldn't blame you. But I just want to remind you that um this is the final report that will be written and submitted with the final map that we adopt. And then let me just read to you from this, the the statutory language. The commission shall issue with the final map a report that explains the basis on which the commission made its decisions in achieving compliance with the criteria described in section two, one, five, five, two, paragraphs A and B. So I we brought a draft of this um report to you. You first saw it on September thirtieth. Um, it was just a sort of a bare bones uh template. And um we are trying to um draft, you know, put it it's it's a bunch of component parts. And um as you can imagine, it would make absolutely no sense to start trying to put this uh report together on December second or December ninth. And there are a lot of parts of the report that we can start drafting, which is what we have done. Um, so you saw a sort of the the first iteration on September thirtieth, and then a second draft uh was in your agenda packet on October twenty eighth. Um, let's go ahead and scroll through. There's a table of contents. Yep. And um that blank page is sort of going to be a letter, um, we think, um, that will be authored by our chair. He's working on that now. And then um one of the questions, and I hope that you will, when you have a chance, take a look at this report. Um, because, you know, we need your review and we need your input. Um, but we start with an introduction that provides some context for the IRC. It shows here the establishment of the IRC, why, you know, the authority of the IRC, the composition, the duties, priorities, and pre- preparation of the IRC. Go ahead to the next page. Um, and then there's a section here called other considerations in which we discuss um the unusual circumstances, the census delay, the pandemic, the fact that all of our meetings, you know, for a very long time were all held virtually. Um, and then the next section is legal considerations. Um, and that, let me stop right here and just let you know that this has not yet been reviewed by council. Um, but they will, and 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 there may be some additional information that needs to go in there. Um, but at the very least, we have um included in there the statutory criteria that we are required to observe as we draw these maps. Keep going. Um, we're providing information on our outreach plan and efforts because part of our um, actually, it's in the statutory criteria that we have to make sure that the public is able to participate, um, that we um um, you know, offer interpretation in several different light and all the different languages, we can keep going forward. So you can see some of the things, hiring of an outreach contractor, we pre-pre mapping public hearings. Please keep going. Um, and some of this is in here now. I mean, I don't know that we're going to, most of the tables, I believe, will be moving to the appendices, but um we're still working on that. Um, and then here's the final plan. Um, and this is essentially the part of the plan that is um the required um section. And uh it will begin with an overview, and I think that we will probably um be asking um counsel at um Commissioner Inman as SPOC demographer to the demographers. And without from the demographers, I think we can um start with that overview because we already know, you know, for example, we know we got the census data. We know what our total population is. We know what our ideal population for each district is. There's a lot of information already that we know. Um, but I just want to point out to you that um for each district, um, we will, we, I'm saying we, there's a lot of other, there are other people that are going to be involved in this. Um, you can see the list of information that has to be written um as part of this final report um for each district. And a lot of this isn't going to actually be able to get started until maybe some of it will be able to start around December second, most likely December ninth. And it has to be ready to go by December fourteenth or fifteenth. Fourteenth is when we is when we're calendar to meet to approve the map. And fifteenth is when we have to um file the map and the final report. But just to go through it quickly, we list the cities, the demographic, oh, I'm sorry, can you go back one? Yeah, cities, demographics, reasonably equal population, and we have to write all that up. Um, you describe how the elections code criterion for reasonably equal populations was met, compliance with the Voting Rights Act, contiguity, you know, community of interest integrity, geographical compactness, place of residence of incumbents, and go on to the next page, unincorporated area, findings and reasons for adoption. So that has to be written for every single district. And um um we're developing a plan where we're um in the midst of sending this to the demographers, to the, you know, our council, our expert council, um, so that everybody is aware um of what needs to happen and um then their role in compiling um this final report. But again, I just wanted to remind you, you've you've, you know, we've been trying to keep you all involved. Um, parts of it have been written. Um, and I I again, I recognize that we've got a lot on our plates. We we're getting a lot of reports, we're studying maps. Um, but I will continue um to bring drafts of of this report to you um so that you may review it, you may comment on it, you may tell us um so that you can have a role in in this final report, and you can tell us um what you think needs to be in it, um what what is in it maybe that isn't quite so necessary. Um, uh, any any other input that you'd like to provide. And with that, I will hand it back to Chair Bame. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosette. Before we do anything else, David, let me ask if there are any requests from the public to speak on this agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Not in advance of today's meeting, but if any members of the public wish to address the commission on the commission's draft final report, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or dialing star nine if you're calling in. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment, Chair Bame.
Thank you very much. Like to move now to any questions or comments from commissioners. Commissioner Pons?
Yeah, I want to thank the um the commissioners for working on this. I think it's a great start, and you will continue to get my feedback and inputs to the body of this report. Um, so thank you for allowing me to provide that input. Thank you very much. Great job. Great start, by the way.
And I will also note that Commissioner Pons has been spending some time on a lessons learned project that will follow on alongside it, but I do want to encourage commissioners to keep that in mind as well. Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Russ.
I agree. That's a great job putting this report together. Um, I noticed, though, in the uh appendixes that that's where the map appears, apparently. And maybe it should be closer toward the front, supported by all of the uh verbal things that support it.
Thank you, Stephanie. I had not noticed that, but you're absolutely right, and I am, I imagine the the map will have a prominent place yeah, in in the report once we get there. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for doing such great work. Appreciate it.
Might actually make a good cover. We'll see. Commissioner Russ?
Yeah, this this is really outstanding. It really is. Uh, to whom would we send um uh our chops to our, you know, our our inputs? Uh, yeah, particularly for what's already written.
Um, that would to that would be to staff, that would be to Barbara.
To Barbara. Okay, okay. And and of course, these districts, these are going to be our new districts. And and of course, I noticed that you have like the place of residence of incumbents. Who knows? We could have all four incumbents in the same district. I doubt it, though, or five. I guess there are five, yeah. Uh, but um no, no, this is, this is quite a piece of work. Um, I a- and and as far as the well, I think you and I had talked uh the other day, I where I thought maybe each commissioner of the district would write their district uh um section up, but we may be in different districts uh after this is all said and done. So staff, staff's going to do that, is that right?
Well, as you can see, it each district, the 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 material, the content of those districts is really pretty technical information. You know, it's about um the demograph, you know, the right, it 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 really, I think, is going to come primarily from our experts, our demographer, or, you know, our demographer.
Right.
Our VRA council, you know, Doc Gross, and um the SPOCs, you know, Commissioner Inman. Uh, it will get no rest. Um, he'll he'll be, um, I think, playing a really vital role in in the drafting of of that section of of the report, really. And and I would be remiss if I didn't actually uh call out staff. Thank uh staff because they've, they're they're, they're doing all, you know, all the heavy lifting. They're they're, they're sort of following the direction of those of us who are trying to assemble um this report, spending a lot of time when there's a lot going on right now. So thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, and this is an excellent start. Thank you.
Commissioner Inman?
Yes, I appreciate all the hard work, effort that's gone into it.
Yes, I appreciate all the hard work, effort that's gone into it. Um, I was just wondering, is there a need or a requirement for us to do a comparison? Between the new proposed, or what, what we adopt and what currently is. But, I mean, do we need to kind of say, here's how things have changed relative to what's currently? Um, out there. I don't see that in here right now, so.
No, so I, I think we should probably ask um council to weigh in on that, but I. My, my answer, my, my analysis would be, no, it doesn't ask us to do that. It just says. The basis on which the commission made its decisions in achieving compliance with the criteria. So.
First question people are going to ask, well, what changed? That's the first question people will ask.
So, you know, um, that, let's, let's. Let's have that conversation and let's keep that open. I, but what you asked was, is there a need? And I guess the question is, is there a legal need or is there a sort of a public relations need? And um, that's a good question. Chair Bane, I don't know if you want to weigh in, or I don't know if we want to ask Marguerite to weigh in. She's unmuted her microphone.
Let me, let me ask, let me call Marguerite first for the legal aspect of it and any other advice.
Yeah, co vice chair um Garcia is correct. There's no requirement to do a before and after. Um, I, I think I would tend to discourage it. Um, in the report, because the. The, the report is to provide the basis for decision making. Your decision making under a brand new statute. I think it makes sense for somewhere on the website for there to be. The current map and the new map that can be explored in detail. Probably on a tool like our web viewer, but. It, having the comparison in the report isn't forbidden. I would have a concern that it dilutes your report, though.
And I, I would add, um, and I wanted to highlight this for all commissioners. There is a section for each district on findings and reason for adoption. In effect, the justification, why did we do what we did? I, I think that's a good place to at least address the highlights. So that some other piece, maybe along lines to what Marguerite described, maybe just a press release. Um, it could be as simple as that. Uh, I have no particular view of owning that introductory piece. I want it to be something that speaks for the whole commission, so I'm sure we could find a way to at least touch on that. Um, but the, the most important piece to me is that it represents something. That shows why and how we reached the decision we did. Now, I do have a captive audience, I'm hoping, of thirty high school students taking ninth grade human geography. I do intend to tell my son's teacher, you got to make this required reading for the final exam. But beyond that, um, it is a new report. It is a new requirement. And I, you know, if I, if I do my cheerleader aspect of cheering. I really do want all commissioners, each and every one of you, to bring your wisdom to bear on this report. Not just in terms of contributing to it via staff, as Commissioner Russ rightly asked and uh got the advice. Thanks for asking that. But also to look it over and see how it reads and see how it looks. As we've talked about before, some of the lessons learned we have in that other document. May include proposals to make things better for the next redistricting cycle. And we should, I would argue, highlight the aspects of our work. That were most important to us to reaching this conclusion, so that the two are mutually reinforced. That's something every commissioner can help with, and it doesn't matter what district you're in, and it doesn't matter what uh reasons you are serving on the commission. It's that joint spirit, I think, we have of trying to make this a successful exercise. So I do want to thank co vice chair Garcia, Barbara, Marguerite, everyone who's been working on this. I do consider the two going hand in hand, the final report and the lessons learned. So thanks to Commissioner Pons as well. And I would again request commissioners do reserve some time, especially in early December. Because as co vice chair Garcia said, a lot of this can be written now and a lot of the experts are writing it now. But a lot of it cannot be written until we're much farther along in the process. And once those port, those portions are being drafted, we'll ideally want to look at the. Already written portions to make sure they might not need to be tweaked in one way or another. So it's a coherent narrative all the way through. That's the aspirational goal I have. Rosette, any final comments?
Nope, you've covered, you covered it all. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you that, for that, commissioners. Again, it's an informational item, um, but it's going to be one taking up some work. We move on to a German. That concludes the business before the independent redistricting commission tonight. Our next meeting is an IRC special meeting on Saturday, November thirteenth, starting at eleven AM. Which will be held virtually via Zoom. I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown, I missed your hand.
I just want to say happy Veterans Day to all you veterans out there. We, we really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Once again, stealing my thunder. Thank you very much for that, Commissioner Brown. It means a lot. Um, we've got several veterans on this commission. They've heard me talk about this before. I don't say it enough without the commissioners themselves. And I think we've got a number of commissioners who've worked with our veterans. Not just when they were in active duty, but currently. Thank you as well. This is the epitome of public service and going into tomorrow, um, it's a perfectly appropriate time. So thank you, Commissioner Brown, for that. All right, on the Saturday meeting, among other things, we will hear public comment and submissions regarding maps. And I would plan on that being uh intense and lengthy. At least that's my hope. And just to reassure commissioners, my intention is to take a break if we need to. And maybe more than a five to ten minute break. So we'll see how long the public input goes, but I do want to let you know. That I have that in mind and please be thinking about what kind of break you may want, depending on the length of public in, of public input we have. We'll also be discussing the changes to the next set of IRC draft maps that were just posted yesterday. We'll have an opportunity to work with flow analytics on live scenario modeling. Where commissioners will be able to see changes to the maps being made and the results there in real time upon request. So do have your requests in mind. Take a good look at those new maps. And something I heard in uh one of the educational uh meetings we've had in the past few days. Please feel free to look back at the old maps. Just because they're old doesn't mean the ideas are completely on the shelf. There's an evolution going on here. But um, we certainly should keep in mind all the work that's gone into this to get to this point. So it'll be a good, solid discussion. I look forward to lots of public engagement on it. And I'm sure we'll come out of that meeting with good instructions uh for the, the last round of revisions, as it were. Uh, under the scenario we've been proceeding under. More details, of course, including the draft maps and meeting links for our county IRC remain available on our website, www.drawyourcommittee.com. Thanks again to members of the public who attended tonight and offered their input. Thank you, commissioners. This meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-nine PM. See you Saturday.